Ready? All right, I'm gonna call the Committee of the Whole meeting for Monday, November 28th, 2022 to order. Clerk Jacome, will you call the role?
Thank you. President's Acting Chair, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor McCabe, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Carter, and excuse us, Mayor Hedrick. And we also, as of right now, is Counselor Sheffield. Excused.
Hold on one sec while we mute that TV. Thank you, Chief. Okay. First, don't worry, the mayor will be back for the next meeting. The first item on our agenda is the City of Groton branding tagline presentation with Miranda Creative, and Sierra Patrick is here to answer questions as well. This is informing only, there's nothing to vote on, but they have a prepared presentation. Oh, Counselor Sheffield has joined the meeting.
I believe I'm here.
You are.
Mr. Sheffield, can you see the presentation fine on your end?
I'm trying to get video here. I'm on my phone.
Swipe to the right.
Swipe right.
You should be able to see everything. Does that give you a little bit of help?
Oh.
I see Groton marketing.
There you go.
That's it?
Okay. Yes. So, we're gonna try, we're gonna move the camera, right Clerk Jacome? So, we're gonna move the camera to view the presentation. So, if we can have the council hold their questions to the end, I think that would be best so that we can see the whole presentation in, on the TV, it'll be the presentation, and then our questions, we'll move the camera and then do the questions, if that makes sense. All right, take it away.
Am I live? Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Maria Miranda, and I'm honored to be here this evening. I'm from a firm called Miranda Creative. And by way of introduction, we are a 35-year, 30-person organization located in the Norristown area. We're gonna be providing an update. Last time I saw you was about maybe six months, maybe a year ago, talking about where we were on the city branding, shared with you where we were on the photo shoots. Sound familiar to some of my friends here tonight? So, tonight is the next exciting step of that, which is the work of this past year. And I'm happy to share with you where we are on a municipal brand, sometimes called a tagline, sometimes called a promotional brand, all of the above. Okay? Everyone roll your shoulders. We're gonna be together for about 20 minutes, going through this as quickly as possible, but to keep you as informed as possible. Ready to begin? This is very impressive, by the way. By way of brief introduction, my journey with you began in 2019, here in this room, talking about what your strengths and weaknesses were and what you needed for an aspect within a brand. In 2020, you issued a RFP document. We are one of 14 vendors that participated in the RFP. And then two years that followed, we went through and coordinated the master brand for the city related to the seal, photo shoots, video shoots, and a product you should be very, very proud of. It is your municipal newsletter that gets issued out on a regular basis out to the community. Everyone here familiar with the organization called Kerma? Kerma is one of the clients of Miranda Creative, and quite often, your newsletter is shared as an example of really strong, you know, community communications that go out. You have an open rate of over 43% on a regular basis for your newsletter, which is very unusual. So, where we are today is we're in the second half of the phase, talking about the branding. By way of introduction, a couple of things to know about Miranda Creative. We're the brand partners behind Connecticut Paid Leaves brand on a statewide basis. And we're also the brand behind Kerma, which you are aware of from municipalities. And we're also the partners behind the new brand for Connecticut Grown. Just so you have some understanding of who your partners are in this process. Anyone who's been in the Hartford area, we are also the partners for Parkville Market. Anyone ever been there? Please make a trip up, it's amazing. About 27 restaurants in one location. I would love to see that come to the eastern Connecticut area. Okay. Let's talk about the core materials that we produce together. I want to acknowledge Sierra and Dan, who are our partners in this process from the City of Groton. You have 105 quality life images that represent your community that are available to you for using on your website, for your newsletters, for your promotional elements. They are beautiful images, real community members showing all aspects of quality of life, including your safety and your shoreline beauty. You also have 100 images from businesses, and you have some amazing videos that have been created as well. Unfortunately, this is a PDF, but you will be getting a copy of this presentation, and you will be able to have some links to see some of the videos that have been created to promote your community. All the videos are waiting for is the conclusion, which is your promotional brand. Okay. Couple of things about your newsletter. As I mentioned, you have issued out over 150,000 sends. You've had 70,000 opens of your content on your newsletter, almost 2,000 click-throughs to your websites, and you have currently about 5,600 email addresses throughout your entire community. My goal for you at some point as a community is to bring in some additional lists that you have in your community and have one universal newsletter. One of our first foundational elements that we addressed following the photos and the video shoots is we went through and created a very comprehensive brand standards for the city seal, the main business version of your brand. Your fonts, your colors, et cetera, are all resolved, so if someone looks at that seal over your shoulder, and they want to order a shirt, or something, or whatever it may be, a pen, et cetera, all the colors are set and everything is continuous throughout. We also had a comprehensive training. When did we do that, Sierra? May of this year? Yeah, May of this year. We did a comprehensive training for all of your communication internal employees. Okay. So, we have the city brand addressed, and the gap tonight is the city marketing, that's what we're gonna be speaking about. Okay? Let's talk a little bit about what is a municipal brand. Okay? It has five aspects. It has a purpose, an expectation, a prospect, and an impact. And I have some examples to share with you. You know, a municipal tagline is not to be confused with a city seal, right? It's meant to convey economic development opportunities. It's meant to convey an affirmation of the choice, why you chose to have your business here, why you choose to live here, and also to invite new individuals to come to within that community. It should be authentic and something that can be adopted and adapted by everybody within that community. You know, its expectations, it should reflect current conditions, realistic future as well. Right? I'm not gonna call you Paris, the city of light, right? But it's not what is authentic or realistic for you, but there are some amazing opportunities within your city that your brand should convey. And let's talk a little bit about the process. Planning, discovery, feedback, refinement, deployment, and measurement. These are all what had happened over the course of this past year. Under planning, it should be very effective, again, adopted and adapted, and should be with you for a minimum of a period of five years. I prefer to see it happen for at least a decade. You're gonna be having signage and materials within your community. You wanna make sure what you're doing is something you're comfortable with, and is compelling and is realistic about your community. Here's a couple of examples. This is the, clearly, you're all familiar with Amsterdam. This is their brand. They created a wonderful iconic sculpture area, signage area, that people take photographs whenever they arrive there on a regular basis. It's become an iconic element, as you can imagine, it's carried out in social media, another spaces on a regular basis. Have a very clear black and red color palette, transportation, bags, all items are related to the IM Amsterdam brand. This is one of my favorite examples. This is from Vancouver. As you can see, Vancouver chose to stack their logo in a specific way, the V-A-N-C-O-U-V-E-R. And in the middle, it creates a compass element. And they use that compass element to say, "In this direction, find the arts. In this direction, find city spaces." And they use that to convey different variables, different colors to reflect different aspects within their community. A blue might be the arts, the yellow gold might be the business district. And here's another example for the city of Melbourne, where they created a master M logo. And they have a series of variables that represent different aspects within the community. Discover, taste, create, dazzle, et cetera, all things to reflect the dynamic aspect of this community. How are we doing, everyone? Okay. So, let's talk about your planning process. Before you can create a phrase or a visual aspect to convey a brand, the first thing you want to find out is you wanna find out what elements that brand should offer. So, we did a series of surveys out into the community. In August of 2021, we surveyed over 200 residents, and we asked them to share with us what they felt the strengths were, the opportunities were within your community, and therefore the brand that came to represent you would be reflective of those things. I believe I saw the chief was here? He stepped out for a moment. We asked about what was important in the resources, what would you recommend about the city, what was your leading factor choosing to be here? How long have you lived here, and how long do you intend to remain here? Were among the questions that we asked them. And we created a little simple wordal graphic to feature some of the elements that were most compelling to those that we surveyed, right? Small, friendly, beautiful, historic, convenient, pretty, peaceful, diverse, safe. These were all phrases that came forward, that they felt reflected, and they wanted the brand to convey about this community. Key to it were, the larger the word, of course, the more dominant it was in the results, historic, friendly, beautiful, safe. All phrases they felt were meaningful about the City of Groton. So, those elements went forward to graphic designers and the committee to look to develop visualizations to convey that, and a tagline that would pass this information along. So, we went through discovery and development. Okay? We then looked into to define a series of differential phrases. We probably were somewhere about a dozen of them, and we distilled them down to three. Okay? A tagline, a visual ideation, and potential application is what we then shared with a variety of individuals within our community. So, these are the following three brands that we brought forward from the process. The first one was Groton City, a place to grow. Groton City, history in the making, and Groton City, making waves. All of them were related to the elements that the community mentioned or spoke about, what they admired about their community. So. How do we get responses and what did we do? We achieved 102 responses to a fairly lengthy survey. We also went out to, this was Groton City Day, right, and a number of other events. There was a QR code to take a survey, to provide feedback. Right? And we also did a series of social media ads that linked to the survey, trying to collect as many impressions and input as we could about the brand, because the goal is to make sure that when we move forward, we are reflective about what the community desired. Okay? Okay. What were the tagline questions that we asked? Is this brand unique and impactful? Does this brand best reflect our community? Can this brand help attract investment in the city that supports economic and community development? Does this brand speak to the value shared by our residents? Economic development, residents, is it reflective of the community? We went through a series of those brands and elements. So, this solution in the middle, Groton City, history in the making, was overall the most popular and compelling among the 102 people that we surveyed about the choices. I wanna take a moment, because you might be asking yourself, Groton City? Is anyone asking themselves that a little bit? Or no? Maybe not. Where Groton City surfaced from is from a number of applications where it is currently happening. I'm sure you are well aware of the signage, the Department of Transport DOT signage. You may not also be aware that they are happening, it's currently being used by the day as a standard for the headlines to describe activities within this community. So, from a graphic design and branding standpoint, we're looking at not your operational brand, but your marketing brand. We look for examples of where they're being used and where they're distilled to the most effective application. Make notes for yourself. I'm happy to take questions from the floor. Can I do that?
I just want, just one. So, I'm from the town. Well, I live in the city town, but I'm from the town. But since I was a little kid, it's actually, it's commonly known as Groton City. I mean, we name it.
It's there.
Here, everybody calls it the City of Groton, but.
Organic.
People work wise, they say Groton City Police, or they say Groton Town Police, you know? It's, you know, I, so that's like.
It's already an application, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was saying anything, because it's common, you know, people say that all the time.
So, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you for the input. I appreciate the reinforcement. The people we surveyed, it was really interesting, of 102 surveyed, only one individual questioned, and not even then against it, they questioned it, saying, "Where did that come from?" So, it gave us an indication that it was already an acceptable phrase. Okay. So, again, city business, the seal, city marketing. And in case there's anyone that's curious, there's also other application where this happens nationally, south of Houston, Soho, and G-Town for Chicago is also going on out there. Okay. Finalized concepts. Let's take for a moment to absorb a bit of why, history in the making, and what it means for the City of Groton. City is well-known for its rich history and high-profile landmarks. In the words of Darius Rucker in his popular song of that same title, "What if this was the moment, a chance worth taking, history in the making?" The city's history is being written every day, and something this tagline celebrates. It could be an entrepreneur making their first dollar. It could be the launch of a highly advanced nuclear submarine. It could be a family moving into their first home. A child taking their first steps as a tourist on our beaches. A researcher developing a drug that will change countless lives. A student moving their graduation tassel from the right to the left. Every moment is history in the making. I'm gonna ignore my internet being unstable. So, visual representation. Our market told us that they liked where we were going with honoring the iconic symbol within your brand. They were not that crazy about the yellow and its application for visualization, but they liked other aspects of it, so this is where we moved to for our visual representation. Okay? Groton City, history in the making. I'll break it down for you in a few aspects of it. The historic symbol of Fort Griswold, located within the G. You'll see later on that this gives us a very clean takeaway element for social media. Groton City for the city's name, and history in the making for your tagline. This is how it appears horizontally, and how it might appear stacked vertically. How does it pair with the City of Groton seal and branding? When you see the two of them side by side, it's very clear that one is a classic branding for the business side of the city, and the other is a city marketing brand. Very clean and very easy to read at a distance. Some variables for it. If we needed just a text indication, say on a pin or on a very simple ad placement, Groton City, history in the making. It's called a word mark. If we wanted to just use an icon version, let's say, an app on your phone, or a social media icon, or say, a circular element on a hat, that might be possible. It also works very well as a seal variable, honoring the seal of your current branding. From an ADA compliance standpoint, the contrast in letterforms are very strong and readable by all ADA design elements. For iconography, there can be an icon core to the city, to its brand. Icons could be developed to reflect other aspects of your community, science and research, community, or a business development variable on it, echoing the same parent brand. For application examples, a large sign or billboard might look something like this. Welcome to Groton City, history in the making. A fun shirt. So far, we've gotten about four orders for that hat already. A great takeaway bag. You see the dominant G shape and the Groton City through that aspect? How it might appear for bright and colorful banners on your streets? Or how it might look opening up an app as a guide for visiting your city? Okay. Let's talk about some marketing examples. How might the visual images we photographed, the sense of the theme, be brought together with headlines to promote your city? Research and development, it's in our DNA. Groton City, history in the making. More than a job, a future for a recruitment ad campaign or a job fair. Very, very simple and close to home, two per year. Groton City, history in the making. Or we could go a little bit more emotional. Population 9,349 and 1. Groton City, history in the making. Okay? It could be about that moment, the first beach house summer at Groton City. Or pride within our utility system. 119 years, 12 hurricanes, one mission. Or history you're about to make this weekend. What's on tap this weekend? Groton City, history in the making. Or a celebration of a business anniversary. 35 years, countless carbs, from Paul's Pasta, history in the making. Let's talk about our next steps. The official rollout vision, we're looking at timing this for your anniversary year coming up around the corner in 2023. Development of initial materials and all full files and materials will be turned over to the economic development team for use. Questions? Yes, Lisa? I'm sorry, Ms. McCabe?
I just, for anybody that might be watching, how can somebody sign up to get the newsletter in their emails?
Individuals can sign up to the newsletter on the City of Groton main website. It is on the right-hand side. As you start to scroll down, there should be a sign-up screen for you. You're welcome.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just was interested, another thing that stuck out was when they said they didn't like the yellow. Can you go a little bit more into that, why they did not like the yellow color?
Sure. So, what they were concerned about, and their reactions and responses were, is that when they stepped back from it, they couldn't see the definition of the side of the, right? And we tried to bring the yellow from the seal, so instead, we went for the green element to count, to respond to that reaction.
Okay, that's all I want to know. I thought maybe they were gonna say something like, because a lot of the street signs are yellow, so they'd wanna make it look like a street sign, that's what I was thinking.
They didn't get that deep on me.
Any other counselors have questions?
I have a couple of questions. This is like a nitpicky question, but can we go back to any of the things with the G logo in it? Is there a reason why there's a line through the monument, the green line?
Yes. If you, if you look at the one from the original seal, it reflects there's a stacked element where it indents "in" in the monument, and that indicates the shape or the detail within the monument itself.
Okay.
Like the base?
Like the base.
Yeah, like the.
Yes.
I can see that. I just, like, to me, that is like a distracting element.
Okay.
But I do really like the, that it's round. I like that idea for like hats and things. My other question is, I actually had a resident the other day ask me how they can get our branded, like merchandise that's branded. Do we have a plan with the rollout to include a way to order branded items for residents online? I know, as counselors, we often will get shirts to go, you know, if we're in a parade or whatever, we have branded items, like I'm wearing now. And, but I don't think we have a, really a process for residents to order branded things, and it has come up recently a couple of times, so is that part of the plan?
We're gonna look into it a little bit further, exactly how we would do, handle ordering your things, or if it's something that is more of a, like, special event, like City Day, or something where we do, like, have them made, but then have them available at certain events, but that's still being discussed of exactly what. We don't really have, like, a sales and merchandise support for that internally, so we have to look at that, but then also see how we could advertise at special events.
I would imagine we could, to remove us from the equation, just have a preferred, the vendor we use for apparel already. We could have our logo information available to them to take those orders. I don't, I don't know if that, how complicated that would be, but that, if that was available, then it would take, it would make us not be in the picture of that ordering. It would just be on the company, which I would assume would welcome that business. But that would be easier for you to not be in your office, having you to take orders or your department. I don't see any reason why that would be complicated to put that on, on a vendor, to say, "Here's our logos," and if any residents, they can order that way, and then have like a limited list, because obviously, you don't want people putting the branding on just anything. So, maybe we could say, like, hats, bags, whatever the list of things we want to be publicly available.
It's like pre-approved, but you can order directly through our.
Right. Yeah, something like that, I think, would be kind of cool. Again, that's just preliminary. I don't know if there's any complications that you would run into with that, but that's just an idea.
I like how you're thinking, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I think that's all my questions. Anyone else? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. I just wanted to piggyback off that. So, I'm thinking, because there's been people who are constantly on Nextdoor app, and they're, I've seen it more from New London, they have a lot of people that go on Ocean Beach, and there has been a few times in Eastern Point, people are saying, "Oh, where can I get a quick t-shirt, because I have people coming in," or "They're leaving in a couple days." So, thinking of that, I was wondering, like, you know, so when you have logos for hats, bags, shirts, if that could be available at Eastern Point Beach, available for sale? Because that's probably where they're gonna visit. Or when they have events at Fort Griswold, have those available, you know, so it's not always online. So, because people say, and I mean, people have even said, I've seen it, "Oh, I think I saw some at the Goodwill. It was on this rack," you know? But I mean, not that we wanna put it there, but I mean, it's just, but I mean, people really digging for these people whose family really, really wanted some logo things from Groton City and New London.
It'd be also wonderful if real estate agents had them for closings, to give people who bought houses here. Yeah. Lots of opportunities.
And just even our local businesses.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the farmer's market, or even.
Fun for wedding party gifts for people who are getting married here.
Yeah. Yeah, there's lots of, lots of possibilities.
Everyone that walks out is their little walking ad in the street. Yes.
Absolutely. I think. Anyone have any other comments, questions?
Thank you very much. I know that a lot of us have been looking for the results of those surveys, or where we're going with that, and it's good to see we're coming to a product coming out. Now, you said the rollout is in 2023. Is there a specific event or deadline that we're looking at that we're gonna roll it out, or do we not have that planned yet?
It's in the process of being planned. It's in the process of being planned, because we're going to put it, it's going to be part of the anniversary celebration. So we'll be meeting to kind of coordinate the details of that, and then how this rollout would be a part of that.
And then I'm sure it'll be looped into the newsletter. So just to piggyback on Council McCabe, if you don't already get the newsletter, please go on our website, check it out. It does have a lot of information, and always has, like, all the important dates. So I've had a couple of people will be like, when's the next meeting? All that information is in our newsletter. So if you get our newsletter, you can always refer back to it, know when the important dates are, when the events are coming up. So then when our anniversary stuff does come out, that will all be in the newsletter, all that information. So.
From the Miranda creative side, our goal is you will have all files within a few weeks. You will be, before the close of this year, you'll have everything you need to move forward to launch your brand with your anniversary.
Nice. Counselor Carter, do you have another comment?
It's a good job. I like it.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. So who came up with the slogans? Who came up with it? Was it you guys, or does it, did I miss that? Like, who came up with the three different?
Like Place to Grow, History in the Making, Making Waves?
So there was, there was, there was probably a collective community from my agency environment and members of your community here. Probably about, I'd say maybe six of us together. It began as a list of about a hundred and one.
Oh, okay.
And then was narrowed down to twelve. And those twelve were then narrowed down to three. So it was collected. But this one in particular came from a member of my staff.
So let me, I got a question for you. Because I like it. I really like it. But it's just a question for you. So the History in the Making, does that insinuate that we have no history?
Hmm, very good question.
Because we have, like, the Ford's up there. You know, so it's like, we have history, so we can.
So what's nice about it is the balance. The icon shape itself could not indicate any more clearly your established history, right? It is, right?
No, that's what I was thinking, but I wanted to make it clear, because we have a lot of history.
You do.
You know what I mean? And I don't, you know, so, all right, cool.
And what we looked for is, we looked for a balance between what might be a draw to visit our historic landmarks, but not only lean in that one direction. That if you want to open a business here, this is a place where you could make your own history, raise your families here, right? So it's history in the making. I'm sure you can visualize with me the dynamics of those two balances. So we're pretty excited about it for you. It's a great solution for your community. It really is.
I like it a lot. Thank you again for all your hard work. And for coming out to do the presentation. And thank you, Sierra, for always coming as well to answer any questions, I think. What is next in terms of the tagline things, or what you have for economic development? What's our next step or next, like, kind of mark?
Our next mark as far as for all the branding elements would be to roll out everything. One, internally with all of our departments, so they have the professional brands, as well as the marketing portion, and then how that would be reflected in the community of what elements we'd want to move forward with. I know we've talked, there have been some talks about, like, wayfinding and different things, or updating banners that are along bridge streets. So this would be of actually taking this tagline and starting to incorporate it into those efforts and designs, and see how that kind of rolls out. And so, yeah, that's my answer.
Yeah, so, so do you think, so your steps of taking this marketing and applying it to banners and, and updating things, will you be doing another presentation at another committee, the whole, you think, in the future to show where those things will be going?
Yeah, that, yes, there'll definitely be more.
It's going to go up.
Yeah, no, they're not just going to go up. It would definitely be discussed. There have to be some internal meetings with department heads, and just coordination of, like, what does this look like moving forward? And then we would definitely provide, come back and bring an update of what that looks like. Before we actually do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's cool. Awesome. Thank you guys so much.
My pleasure.
Counselor Norris, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, has there been put together any type of draft budget on the rollout? Is that in the twenty-three budget, or is that something twenty-four budget, is it?
Well, it would be, it would be included in the twenty-three budget. So it's in the process of being kind of looked at now as we prepare for budget season.
So it'll be in the twenty-four budget? Good, we're in twenty-three now.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, the reason why I was asking is because we're talking about rolling it out sometime calendar year, or before July of twenty-three. And I didn't know if you had yet started to work as a team and figure out the plan of implementation and what that would look like financially.
Those details are being worked out. And then in the planning budget, there is a little bit of wiggle room to do some initial rollouts. And then beyond June, we'll be planning, have a full budget for that.
I only ask because I assume it's going to be huge if we're talking about changing over decal on vehicles and everything else, so. So just, grab your plan.
If I could, if I could offer a voice on that? So, you know, I, I would not remove or change the city seal on things like vehicles. This becomes a marketing brand. It could be a secondary decal on environments. And so much of your world, and everyone's world right now is digital, which has a zero-expense application. So adding it to the economic development pages of your website, or adding it to your Facebook graphics where it's appropriate, those are all no-cost placements. So you have a lot of options that are very little cost to do, to bring forward a marketing brand. And you probably already have places where you're maybe doing a trade show, or running an ad in, say, the Hartford Business Journal, or trade publications for site finders. Basically, it costs no different to run an ad with or without the logo.
All right, one, one quick question.
Counselor Carter.
Um, this, because this is all new. Um, are you guys, because, um, just to be clear, because I, you said that, did you like the logo, or you don't like the green?
I like the green. I like the logo. I find the line in the middle of the monument distracting.
But I feel like it, I feel like just the pop of color.
But, no, but I like the pop of color. I agree.
So that's what I'm saying. So my question is, are you guys deciding this? Or is this going to be a council-type thing, or are you guys just going to say, all right, this is good to go, whatever this is, whatever? Yeah, I think you should do that.
Right. So you have a, you have an economic development leader, right? And we spent a year and a half in the process. And quite honestly, a thirty-five-year brand agency helped you with this, right? We do hear all voices, though. And I, I will make, take a look at maybe the density of that line one last time. But, you know, it isn't, it isn't a vote decision type of thing, right? Yeah, I think it's, I think if you spend a little bit more time with it, in all fairness, you've seen it for thirty minutes.
Oh, no, I, I wasn't saying that, because I think you should change it. I genuinely was just curious, the thought process behind it. I do really like, I kind of like that we, I think a lot of people liked the other logos because they were round, because there was like a round element to them. So I do think that this probably satisfies the people who liked the other logos a little bit also. So I think it's a smart combination.
A balance between, I like how they balance against your seal. And they complement each other. So I think we're very successful.
Yes. Very much appreciated. Thank you guys very much.
An absolute honor, and Sierra was an amazing joy to work with everyone. Absolute joy. Thank you very much.
That's good to hear. Thank you, thank you. Next.
Can I sneak in one question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Sheffield. We took your, your picture off the screen.
Where are you?
I apologize. Go ahead, Counselor Sheffield.
Yeah, I, I would like to ask about the color, the city colors. I know this blue and green, is that the choice of what you guys have decided? Because I know those colors remind me of Mystic, the blue and green. So I was wondering if Grotton City was going to have its own colors.
Would you like an answer?
Sure. I'm happy to let Sierra answer that question.
Hey, Stephen. So the City of Grotton's base brand colors are a combination of a dark blue, a baby blue, a green, an orange, and gold. And then the marketing brand, as you see, will, is complementing three of those colors. But as we, when we send out the information, you can see within your packet that the city seal kind of reflects all of our brand colors. And then we chose colors from that to make the marketing brand tagline.
Okay, because I, I just wanted to make sure we didn't, you know, we weren't copying Mystic. They might get offended. So, you know, we just kind of wanted to develop that.
I plead the fifth.
So, so I wanted to wonder with the green and gold, so. So, but I like the, the History in the Making, that was my choice as far as the, our branding. So I, I like that a lot. So, but I like all the designs. They look great.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's, sorry again, Counselor Sheffield. I couldn't see your face on there, so I forgot to go to you. Next up, we have Public Works.
Okay, good evening, Deputy Mayor and counselors. This evening, I'm here to request approval for the purchase of two vehicles. I'll speak to the first one, which is the Elgin Sweeper. We are looking at replacing a sweeper. It was budgeted and approved in capital for fiscal year ending 2022. We did utilize the Sourcewell contract for the purchase, or the agreement. The price for the vehicle is three hundred and thirty-one thousand, twenty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. A little bit about the sweepers. We currently have two of them. The oldest of which has not been on the road for over a year. It's badly rusted. We're having difficult times getting materials. It is actually a nineteen ninety-nine vehicle. It's a Sterling unit. That particular unit works really well, or worked at one time really well for catch basin cleaning and gathering leaves. It was a really good sucker machine. The second one that we have is a two thousand and ten. That's an Elgin. That one's still on a rope. That's our primary unit right now, with the Sterling being offline. That works really well with sweeping the roads, but not so, so much as a sucker. The intent with the purchase with the Elgin, it's a dual-purpose machine. So it works really well with sweeping the road, as well as gathering the leaves and cleaning the catch basins. Okay? Questions on that at all?
Counselor McCabe.
Since we have one that's offline, do we get trade-ins, or do we get some value out of that? I'm just curious.
We'll try to auction that one off. It's gotten to the point where, it still has some value. It's got a couple of components on it that are fairly new, where people that are looking to do this business, we, there's some value for that. I will make note, though, that, you know, it took us, again, this is to, the budget year was 2022. It took me a year to get anybody that was willing to even talk about having an opportunity to get the machine. So I think there's some value in that for others to, you know, to look at this as, hey, I've got a machine that I've got to put a little bit of work into. But if they can't get anything, it does supply something that they can work with. Okay?
Counselor Norris.
What kind of mileage are we talking about, that annually?
So that machine, I believe there are, our newer one has a twenty-twenty-two. That one, I'm sorry, a twenty-ten, right? And that one has just over thirty thousand miles, but it's got a lot of hours on it. So it's not much time on the road, but it's running. And, and that's kind of where the wear and tear comes in. And you think about these machines, they're out there cleaning streets, the salt, the gravel, they really, really go through. It's, it's a tough life for that, for that type of machine. Technology's gotten a little bit, a little bit better now. A lot of the components that they work with are, are not so rust-prone. So the newer stuff is much, much better. With purchasing the dual-purpose unit, I think that puts us in a good, a better position ten, fifteen years from now on making a decision how we want to go to. I like the dual-purpose setup.
Any other? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. I was just saying, the price you said, three hundred and thirty-one thousand?
Yes. Three thirty-one, oh, twenty-nine, fifty-five. And I think it's up on top of your resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, yeah, I think they carried it incorrectly down below. So thank you. Yeah, thank you.
So when they, just, I just, knowledge of the machine, so being a sweeper, I understand. So when it actually vacuums up the leaves, where is that actually stored?
So it has a hopper. So we gather it in a hopper, and then we'll bring it back here to the yard.
And does it chop it, or just collect some holes?
No, it does. It grinds it down. And then we'll transfer it from that to a dump truck usually. So we'll stage a dump truck on the street somewhere.
Okay.
And we'll get everything up, and that way we don't have to bring the unit all the way back and forth each time. So that's kind of how, how we operate with it.
So what about square mileage? Can it cover before it actually has to go relieve itself?
Um, oh, good point. So, that's a good way to put it. So I don't know with the yard size, I think, I'm sure it's in the, it's in the specs here on the size of the hopper. But when it mulcifies it, and it contains rack, we're out there. So I watch the guys, and they'll usually load it at lunchtime, you know? Fill it up at lunchtime, they'll come back, and it'll empty it out, and they'll go back and hit a second course of the day, and then dump that into the truck, drive the truck back. And that's why you don't see a whole lot of mileage on the vehicles. We'll stage them sometimes if we have a good road. So we just bring the, the dump truck back and forth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other counselors? Counselor Sheffield?
Uh, yes, Bill, how you doing?
Good evening.
Do we have any, is there, you know, time-sensitive as far as making any purchases here?
For this particular unit, so I should make mention and thank you. So the, the proposal for this expires in thirty days. And that's how difficult it's been to get these vehicles. So if, you know, I'm looking for a timely response, a couple of weeks from now or something, so that I can generate, you know, work with Ron and generate a PO and get that locked in. And that basically gets us in the queue for assembly. And if we don't, you know, not push, but if we don't get on this one, I'm, I'm reluctant to think that I'd have difficulty coming up with another vehicle in a, in a timely manner. This was a year, just to get them to even say, I've got one that could be yours. You've got thirty days to move on it.
Is that thirty days from today?
Uh, thirty days to generate a PO. It's on the, on the thing here. It's in the, it's in the proposal. And they actually spoke to a day. So the last price, it says price valid for thirty days from the date eleven, eleven twenty-one this year.
Okay, thank you.
So thirty days from the twenty-first.
Quick to piggyback on what Counselor Piazza said, the price is correct in the top of the resolution, but in the therefore be resolved part, it's incorrect.
That is correct. So it's three thirty-one. Yep, three thirty-one, oh, twenty-nine, fifty-five.
And then my other question is, I know you said it took you a year to get this vehicle to be available. Did we try to get other quotes from other companies, or was this the only one that sells this item, or?
Yeah, well, again, this one was the one that was on the Sourcewell contract, and that's why we really stuck with them. It's a vendor that we've utilized before, and they're very reputable with following up with issues, so we'll be stuck with them. And the pricing is accordingly.
Is it not the city policy to get three quotes?
I don't know, Ron, if you want to talk to that?
Over ten thousand does require a bid. However, we're using Sourcewell, it's a consortium, so they've actually already done the bid work.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. That is all my questions. So I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of December fifth, twenty twenty-two.
So move?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Oh, what? Any abstentions? Or nays, abstentions? I forgot. I should write that down. Motion passes, and on to the next.
Okay.
Item.
Okay. And the second vehicle is for a, to replace the existing bucket truck that we have. The price for that unit is, the new unit's a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven ninety-seven, and fifty-five cents. This, again, is utilizing a state of contract, Connecticut contract, which was awarded to Genworth Ford. We worked with them on this. A quick note about the bucket truck that we have, it's number nineteen. We, we self-perform work in a city for arborist work and other things. This truck is a nineteen eighty-eight vehicle. We've been using it for quite some time. Parts are obsolete to get. Matter of fact, our mechanic in the garage has, has actually made several repairs that required fabricating his own parts for it. The truck must pass an annual inspection, which puts us in a little bit of jeopardy there. Failure would force us to use a rental, and in times after storms, try to get a rental, and it's nearly impossible. Repairs to this date, to date on this vehicle exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Mileage is low. dollars. Mileage is low, again, this is down also around thirty, but the miles, the hours are actually very high. We performed nearly a thousand jobs on this vehicle, which we've recorded, and we always didn't have a work order system, but, you know, I can run a report and pull up over nine hundred and eighty-five jobs that we do, so we use it frequently. Another important piece, employee safety is also taken into consideration, you know, so the truck's thirty-four years old, so it's something that we, again, so this was approved on the fiscal year ending 2023 budget for this year. Again, this vehicle was very hard to get. I also have a thirty-day commitment that they're asking for, to have a PO, to hold it. If not, Jangris told us we would be expecting to wait another year to get this vehicle. Also, like I said, I mentioned, we utilize the state contract on that, and for everything. Okay? Questions?
Any questions from the councillors? No questions, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of December fifth, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda is human resources. And you all should have at your desk, this single piece of paper was left at your desk, this is for this item. Uh-oh.
Hi. Good evening. Good to see you for a while, it's good to see you. I have come before the council this evening to present a change in two of our handbooks. We have approximately fifty-five non-union employees, of which fourteen are department heads and GMs, and they're in one category, and then an additional thirteen that are salary folks. Twenty-eight are hourly, and eight were hired prior to the oh-eight first column, and then there are nineteen that have been hired after oh-eight. When we had, it's been over a year now, that we've had a non-union meetings where the non-union folks came and spoke with the mayor about the different items that they would like us to have looked at. One of them, a big one, was vacation time. It's really become evident for new candidates that we've been interviewing, that time off to spend with family, non-work activities, rest and relaxation, is extremely valuable to them, and I'm not sure that's going to go away. We have actually had a few misses with potential hires, who were not happy with our vacation policy, and we do have someone that has been with us probably two or three years, she's wonderful, and she told us that she probably would not have taken the job had she known how difficult it was to work with only ten days off a year. So, that was one of our big gives that we wanted to take a look at, and so I wanted to, I hopefully made it very easy for you to take a look at this. So, in, up until now, our handbooks have the hourly's hired before oh-eight, and they were brought in at fifteen days right off the bat. For some reason, a few years ago, I think under Mayor Dalebreth, she decreased that to ten days per year. Now unfortunately, also with all of this, is when people know that others have come in at fifteen, and then they're coming in at ten, and it's, you know, ten years low, even more than ten years later, there's a question as to why that happened. So, again, that was a really big thing for them. So, what I proposed there was to at least give them two more days, and then they're fine with the three weeks after the fifth year's complete, and hopefully the twelve days will help. We also have salaried folks, and like I said, there are, let's see, we have twenty-seven hourly people, I mean, I'm sorry, salaried people. They are currently in the same category as the hourly people, and we just felt that they, nothing really different about what they have for benefits, even though they're salaried. And they do, most of them do work, many more hours after forty, and we don't have comp time or anything like that. So, they were hoping that they would be able to get some sort of a pat on the back, or whatever, see some kind of value in what they do. And so, I propose giving them an increase in their vacation time, from the hourly of the ten to the fifteen, and then from the fifteen after five years to eighteen, and after ten years, they would go to twenty. And our last category is our management team. We get the same in the entry as fifteen days, from one through five years, and then after five, beginning with their sixth year, they would go from eighteen to twenty days, and after ten years, they would go to twenty-five days to twenty. So that is the proposal. We've been working on this for probably a year, and it's been approved by the rare animals, that means anything to you, but they know, he's behind us on that. So, I would like to have your consideration in looking at this, and I'd be interested in what you have to say.
Council McCabe?
What, do you accrue, year to year? So?
I wish we did. We, the first year you accrue, and then after that, we front-load the vacation time every January first, and then if someone leaves and has taken more time than they would have earned, you know, they have to pay it back to us. I think it would be, I've been talks with Ron in your house about doing, it's just going to straight accruals, I think it would be just better for everybody. It's really confusing doing it the way we're doing. So hopefully that will go to that, and then it would be great.
Okay, so they would lose it at the end of the year, with the current policy, if they don't use it?
If they don't use it? So, right now, if you don't use your time, we have a carryover and a buyback. So, for instance, if you've got sixty hours left, and you're hourly, you can roll over up to forty, and then you can pay out, you can get paid out half of what's the remainder, so ten hours.
Okay.
And that's complicated, too, and it's a lot of work, but, yeah, I don't think, you know, some people, especially those in the higher levels, and those that, oh my God, some of the salaried people don't take anything all year, and, you know, I'm always asking them to plan your time better, because you can take Fridays off in the summer time, right Ron? Because that works.
Yeah, yep.
So you have to get, yes.
Are you, are you all set, Council McCabe?
I'm all set, thank you.
Council Carter?
So is that, is that why, I listen, I listen pretty well, but, is that why you said, when you said with the salaried people, to throw a pat on the back, and so they can cash out the time?
Not to cash out the time, but just to be able to have more time.
No, we just said that some people don't use their time that they have, so, so that would, that'd insinuate that there's more days for them to cash out at a salaried rate, which is, which is fine with me, but we just got to call it what it is.
It is, yes.
You know what I mean?
People who don't normally take it will probably continue to not, but you know, those people are actually, for the most part, are in the management director, the department heads and the general managers of the final column.
Yeah, I got you. That makes sense, the fifteen days, that's, that's a, a day and a quarter a month, right? That's what, I mean, that's what the state gets, you know, that's standard, you know? I just, the, when it gets to the twenty and the twenty-five days, that's what it looks like to me, though, that it's more, like, nobody's going to use that time, if, if, if... I mean, I'm a big advocate of everybody should get a whole lot of time, but if they're going to use it, you know what I mean? You know, people have families and using it, but just, you know what I mean? I'd be more in line with giving bonuses to, to, to salaried people, than just give them extra days, and just, because to me, it kind of looks like it's a way just to go ahead and incentivize it in a backdoor type way.
So?
Like, if you read this, plus twenty-five days opposed to fifteen days, I mean, that's, I mean, that's a lot of time. Considering you get all the holidays off, right, you get every holiday off, it's, like, you know, I'm for, I'm for the salary people, but I'd rather give a bonus than just give it, to me, I mean, I don't, and this is just, these are just numbers that you kind of threw out there, but you said?
In the green, but you just, yes, we talked about it, and, but you know what, I'm not sure if, when something comes to the council, whether you, do you ever talk about, well, we prefer, or we would probably pass it if you do this? Is that?
I just?
I mean, that, that is part of what, I mean, I think part of what the committee of the whole is to have a discussion, so, for example, if Council Carter was to say, I think we should do this instead, I, I think it's something that could be considered.
And I'm just looking at it, because, you know, the, these guys, they do a lot of good work, and they should get, like you said, incentivized for it, but I, I think, I think by doing it this way, it's kind of, I don't know, that's just a long time for somebody getting fifteen days to twenty-five days, like, what about, I mean, like, somebody, somebody that has ten years on the job is just as important as somebody who has twenty years on the job, so you could argue that they should get more time, too. So what I'm saying is, you're arguing we should give, the salaried people, right, extra, right, which you could argue that the salaries in the, you could argue that their salaries, that's why they get, you know, they're paid, but, but, but I'm saying is, have you guys had discussions about giving them, like, a yearly bonus, or something?
Bonuses don't seem to go well here, and I think, I'm not sure if that's every municipality, but?
But, but I think that's what we'll see with the twenty-five days, they're going to cash these in, but you're moving money in a different way.
Self-bonus, right?
Yeah.
I, I think, to Council Carter's point, I don't see anyone that's moving from fifteen days to twenty-five, because that is, that would be a huge jump. I, I think the question maybe, should be, is, do you know off the top of your head, either how many, or what percentage of our employees buy out their vacation time instead of taking it? It's on my list already.
I don't have that, but I probably can get that, because I believe we track everything up.
Because I think, to me, that is a good question, and the, the issue, I think, on our end is, as an employer, how do we encourage people to take their vacation time? Because we've all been that person where we work too much, and then you realize, I haven't taken any time off, and I need a break, and maybe there's something we could do on the employer side to encourage people to use their vacation time more. And I don't know if that could be in, you know, we have a relatively small workforce, so, for example, if the public works director is out, who fills in for him? Or is he still working while he's on vacation, and is that de-incentivizing taking a vacation because you're working anyway?
Certainly, and sorry, but that's where I was getting at, you know, so we got the leaders taking more time, where I think it should be, if we're going to give them bonuses, just give them bonuses. I don't, would you guys want a bonus rather than having the cash time in?
Well, the-
Because that's where I see this going, I think it's a, it's kind of a, to me, I'm reading by the lines, I know Mary doesn't take a lot of time off, you said that, that are, Ron doesn't take time off, right?
No, he gets his vacations spent.
But, but what I'm saying is, I know that they, they're here, they're here, you know what I'm saying? So does this, is this something that's even, like, what I'm saying, if I'm giving somebody twenty-five days, they're going to take twenty-five days. I want them, because they want to take the twenty-five days. They, I don't think they want to, I think we should have a bigger discussion on what we're get, what we, how we can incentivize salaried people in the city, that's what I'm saying.
I think, Council Sheffield has his hand up, I want to see if he is probably going to interject, maybe add to that part of the conversation.
I mean, it's really up to them.
Council Sheffield?
Yes, does, do, does vacation time roll over, or does everything have to be in that calendar year?
There is, there's an option at the end of the year, or by November first, or summer December first, to fill out a form that will let you roll over and to also cash out some of that time. And that's, that's where the, you're saying adding in the twenty-five, now they're probably going to get more cash out, because they still don't have time to take it, and that's where you're coming from. But when you talk about bonuses, I'm thinking, well-
Well, because I listened, right, and you said, to throw them up, right, and then you say that we don't take time. So, yeah, I agree, there might be, there's some form of incentive, right?
Mm-hmm.
But, and again, I'm not in these, I'm not in the discussion, I don't know what the directors use, but are they going to take the time, or give them the time, are we going to take them? Are we going, are they going to take the time? That's what I'm saying.
So, all right, so you've got eighteen department heads and GMs, and we want to bump them up a little bit. Now, that's sort of a reward, but for some reason, some year they got a project going on, and they can't take half of it, there's half left over. Well, wouldn't that half that's left over, and the amount that they can cash out, be like a bonus to them?
It would, it is a bonus, that's, that's my whole argument.
So, but, okay.
That's my whole argument, but I'm saying, we're giving them-
But then you have a choice to either take the vacation time, or at the end, take whatever is allowed as far as cash.
Okay, I guess I was just looking in totally different, I'll talk to the directors, I'm looking at totally different, I'm talking about, these are the people that head our department, so we're giving them more time where we need them there. So if they're going to be there more, we should give them more of a, you know, different kind of, I mean, I understand, to give them more time, but I, like, what do they have now?
I think what you're talking about is a kind of a different discussion than the day off, adding days off discussion. So I think it's a different thing, I understand what you're saying, but-
You're saying, instead of giving them that, why don't we come up with a bonus program?
Right, I think, I think that is, that is a different discussion, because I don't disagree that-
Because I don't, I don't-
I think merit should be awarded at work. I know that we've had difficulty in the past doing that.
Certainly, and I was one that, at the beginning, years ago, said that, I mean, they're salaried, you know what I mean? But I feel like there should be something, you know what I mean? But I, I just don't, twenty, Mr. Norris, I don't want to put you in it, I know you're, you're-
Council Carter, this is not a back and forth between the councillors of-
I'm just asking him to put this in, because he's an employee in a government, so I don't know if-
Right, well, this is not a back and forth, so if Council Norris wants to put his input, he can speak himself. I just don't want to get into, into a back and forth.
I'm not getting into-
But do any other councillors have any other questions? Council Piazza?
Thank you, so feeding off what Council Carter said, so, I understand what you're saying, but my questions are, so you're specific to the same bonuses for salary?
No, I'm just, I'm just listening, and I catch up on things, and I'm like, not, like, I'm very cut, clear, killer throat, and to me, it looks like incentives in a backdoor type way, that's what it looks like to me.
Right, right.
I just, it's what I was saying today.
So my question on the facts that you've given, is, when they came to, to the table with this, is this what the majority senses, is saying that, yeah, we like this, or was their discussion reference to bonuses instead? And this is, what was the result?
No, that was not the result of a conversation about bonuses. I think most people know that bonuses, we asked about that, and that's not how it's been, we want to give bonuses for, say, a bachelor's degree in your particular work position, or a special certification that you got, like paralegal, something like that. That doesn't seem to be well-received here, I'm not sure why, so those would be smaller bonuses, so I can't imagine, you know, something that would probably make a difference as far as a bonus to somebody who could have the twenty-five days and cash in what they couldn't use, and still get that twenty-five days either as time off, or as cash, if that's what they prefer.
So when they fill out the paperwork to say what they want to do with it, when is the check, check actually cut, and they're, and received?
They get the check just under December.
Okay, because I was just going to say, in the, the first hospital I worked at in Rhode Island, they did something very similar to this, and a lot of the nurses loved that, but they cut it before Thanksgiving, or it was like around Thanksgiving, so they could use it for Christmas shopping, so, but the main thing that we found from, is that people didn't, they didn't take as much time off.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Because they knew-
Because they know they're going to get some, I got you, all right.
Right, because that was their goal, basically, you know, so.
Yeah, you're right, someone here told me that they, they use it for a vacation, so, but is that bad? I don't know, I mean, maybe they couldn't go on vacation otherwise, you know?
Yeah, I was just, because you- Yeah, I was just, because you, I said, so, my thing is, just as far as discussion, is that if they're coming to the table with A, B, C, and our general consensus is, A, is that what the result reflected, the majority of the consensus says, we would prefer increased days.
That, they, it's something that they had asked for, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So, Councilor Norris?
Think you know the questions I'm gonna ask. So, while there may not be a financial impact, until you brought up the fact that you can, you can cash out. So, my first question would be, is, do we know what the financial impact would be for those that are currently entering their tenth year under management? That would be going from twenty days to twenty-five days if they did not take those five days vacation and cashed out.
I do not have that answer. I was hoping Ron would be here, because I thought he might be able to help me.
Alright.
He's in the hall.
If he's in the hall, there's a lot of use for him.
I'm, I'm sorry, is he available in the hallway? Chief, can you see if, uh, U-Hauls will come in here, please?
So, while we wait for Ron, the other question is, um, so did, can you name other like communities that you possibly benchmarked against to?
I did, we actually have an HR consortium, which is really great with localities, we've got Montpel, Stoneton Town. So, I did reach out to them, we've got like eight, nine, um, I reached out to them to see what they do, and I only got three answers back. And the one that I was surprised at is, um, the town of Groton, they give seventeen days, they give fifteen days when you start, and every July, you get two more days, and then you get a day per year, then you hit twenty-six days, and then that's it, and that's for everybody.
But do they have a buyback program?
No.
Okay. Alright, so, m- moving on then, could you tell me how this compares with, um, our union folks currently?
Um, depending, well, depends on some, a lot of the unions don't get a lot of vacation initially. Then, in fact, there's one union that you have to wait a full year before you get five days. And, um, we had someone decide not to take the job, who was really, really qualified because of that. So, I think, I'm thinking that's probably something they might look at in the negotiations, that it'll start after the first of the year. Um, but then, the longer term ones do go up to thirty, thirty-five, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five. Thirty-five, you can't go there anymore, that got cut off, and now they're going up to thirty.
Alright, but it would be really interesting to know, based on current management, uh, how many would be in that tenth year, going from twenty days to twenty-five days? And what the financial impact would be if they did buyback. And then it, it would be really interesting, I, I gotta tell you, if, to compare the management vacation time that we're talking about with other municipalities, that that would be. I mean, I don't know.
I tried reaching out to the, the la- the, not ladies, ladies and gentlemen that I know from the ten different communities. And only three have gotten back to me.
Yeah, well, what, what's really good about your profession is, simple phone call to other HR directors, and you get an answer right away, so.
Is that, is that what yours does?
Yeah, so, uh.
So, what's her name, can't finish that?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, 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 no, I understand, um, so, Ron, the, the discussion is about, you know, increasing vacation time. And, um, for those who do not take vacation time, do we have any idea, um, what that looks like? Percentage of people who roll over or cash out, um, no, we'd have to really look at that.
So, I think, to fr- frame that a different way, is this going to impact our budget? Increasing the amount of time off we give people if the same percentage of people don't take those days that we're giving them? Is kind of the question.
It, it's a cost, no matter which way you look at it, whether they take the time or not, because now your non-productive, non-productivity time goes up as well. So, there is a cost either way, um, I was not asked to cost it out from either direction. Um, I, and from a management, they can buy back up to eighty hours. So, somebody who may buy back forty now could be upping that up to another forty. So, there is that, that risk with putting more on there, but I don't know the percentages of who, who buys back and who doesn't. The non-union is only up to forty, for the non-management.
So, any other councils have questions? Um, so I have a few other questions on it. One thing to me is, I, I understand the discussion of if people are buying back their vacation time, but I, I think it's unfair to employees who do take vacation time to consider not increasing vacation time, because some employees don't use it. Because you're kind of punishing everyone else if you say, that's not worth it, to do that. Um, I, as, as you stated, some people, there are some years where there are a lot of projects in one department, and it is harder to take time off. And I think we can all think, if you think of every department of years where, like, there's been a big, big project, or a big, you know, deal, like next year's gonna be our anniversary year, I'm betting a lot of our department heads are gonna have a hard time taking time off, because there's gonna be a lot more of stuff going on, possibly. Um, so, to me, I, I don't, I don't personally see a problem with it being consi- like, people considering it kind of a, a bonus, because as the finance director said, it, it's a cost either way. I do think, you know, to be realistic and know what those costs are is, is nice, but, um, and I was also gonna ask if we compared it to other municipalities, um, one of the things I noticed, I've, um, had watched, uh, the town had some hiring issues because of salary and benefits that were not up to snuff with other municipalities, so they had people decline jobs, um, cer- in certain positions, because they weren't enough. I, um, for the fi- the hourly employees that are now at ten days, was there a discussion of bumping them up to fifteen right away to match the other employees, or no?
Um, yeah, I think, yes, there was a discussion about that, um, like I said, this took place, oh, over a year ago. And when we started discussing it, we did talk about that, and we decided that we would, we would do the twelve. I personally would have a problem with fifteen.
I think, or, or either that, or, um, if you did, you know, twelve right away, then thirteen, then fourteen, and then fifteen? Like, even if we did it, I think that.
Some do that at the end, rather than the top, but, oh, no, you know what, somebody actually does that. Um, the town of Groton, which gives really great vacation time, they're so unfortunate, because they're in a backyard. Um, they start out at fifteen, like I said, and then the Ju- first July, first, they get seventeen, and then it goes up every year. Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, from twenty-six years, um, which is about, it stops at twenty-two. Yeah, twenty-two years, you get twenty-six days, and then it stays there.
I mean, I, I think it's fine the way we have it, like, you know, shelves, basically, but, like, to get up to, I mean, because if I were an employee hired now, and I had less, uh, vacation time than someone who was hired, you know, fifteen years ago, I'd be kind of mad, too. Um, so, I, I do think that's kind of unfair, that those people don't have fifteen days. Uh, I don't, I'm not sure if the discussion, keeping it twelve for the, for, um, now, if that was a financial reason, or logistical reason, or, um, but.
I think it was just a discussion, and it was, the ending, I, I think the majority just felt that, well, put them up to twelve days, and that was for giving them something, but, you know, I, I, a couple of these that responded said that everybody gets the same amount of days, no matter which, um, category they're in, hourly, salary, yeah.
Hmm, um, my other question, we have eighteen management, in the management category, right? Um, do you know what that distribution is, like, how many are in the first five years versus?
So, yeah, directors, uh, directors, um, love the manue.
Right.
Right, so, I, I'm not sure exactly how many, but I would say I would be nine. Yeah, no, I know, but I'm looking Joe Summers, uh, somewhere along. I'd say probably five, six, five or six, or, I'm less than five years.
So, most of them fall under?
Five years.
Under the more of them. Um, I mean, I, like, as you know, I'm, I'm always pro employee benefits. Um, and, uh, I do think, you know, one of the things, it used to be always a good job to go work for your local municipality, and I think that we have kind of faded from that. I think benefits in the regular market sometimes have eclipsed what we have, because we haven't reviewed it often enough. Um, I'd be interested to see, um, how these compare to, have we, I know you said you, you tried to compare them to other municipalities. Did we look at, like, the market in general, like, an outside job? Like, for example, if the, um, Parks and Direct Rec Director, if you were to compare the days off to a, like, community center director, or something like that, so, like, the non-municipality job? Um, I think that would be interesting, um, to look at. Um, I know the intent is to move this to the December fifth meeting, um, but I don't know that the council seems ready to vote on it. Um, I think, I don't know if, um, if we have more questions, does the council think that you guys want to get some of those answers back and speak about this at the next committee of the whole meeting? Or, or do you think you're ready to vote on it?
Well, once a proposed, uh, expiration date to, to delight the employees.
To delight the employees, I was hoping for Jan. one, but, um, I know Ron likes to do things on fiscal years. So, um, maybe I wait till July first, um, after, if it passes, and, uh, we can have that discussion. But, um, we do front loading, like I said, so that happens in January.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's not a big deal, if we have to do a catch-up or whatever, or just start in July and figure that out, so that's like half the additional time. And nothing's easy here, so that's okay.
So, I mean, I think, uh, one of the questions is, when we're talking about other jobs, that maybe somebody would maybe transfer over to, so, and so on, to compare. Um, and I don't know if, if there's even an answer, obviously, people are here for years for some reason. Because if there was something, a better bite out somewhere, s- somebody would obviously, you know, take a nibble. So, um, I'm just wondering, what else, I mean, we're looking to hopefully, and, um, I don't wanna say entice, but, um, I wanna say, come to an agreement and better benefits, and so forth, and so on. Is there other things that, um, like you said, the person that was really well qualified with the vacation time? It was vacation time, did you say, that they didn't like?
Yes.
Okay, so, but the people that are staying, I mean, besides this, what, what Major Lee is keeping them? I mean, it could be just the people here, or is it they have excellent benefits, say medically, or, I mean, besides this?
Well, I mean, I think we have decent benefits, for sure. Are they better out there right now? Sure, everybody's trying to get people to work for them, and they're giving them the forty hour, uh, they're giving them, um, you know, four weeks vacation, walking in the door.
Right.
And that's, that's it, don't ask for anything more, that's all you get, and now, but it's happening right away. We started struggling trying to get people, um, haven't been doing a whole lot of recruiting in the last, probably, two or three months. We, we, we have, you know, ways, and, um, we probably only hired the ten people in the last month or so, I mean, last, uh, three or four months. So, um, we're seeing it, it's not hurting us yet, um, I just don't want it to, because it's not getting better as far as recruiting up there, so.
So, I do, I do think then, maybe the consensus is, we move forward with this, but do some more analysis in the future of, like, what, how to incentivize employees, or, um, you know, because I, I, you know, a lot, you, you, like you said, this discussion happened a while ago, and we've had, um, we've been wanting to increase the time for a while. Um, and I do think the main, the main thing is to make sure that we don't have issues recruiting when we need to. Um, because if we fall behind on that, then, you know, you can't, you can't pitch it. When someone says you don't have enough vacation time, you can't be like, okay, wait three months, and I'll bring it to the council, and we'll change that. So, um, I mean, I would be in favor of, of moving it, and then having further discussion possibly about the future, Councilor Norris?
I, I'm actually trying to follow the thought process, and, so, on one hand, I, if I stay with the hourly folks, or even the hourly to salaried folks, I can kind of get it. Alright, this, that looks like, yeah, we wanna attract people, so we're going from twelve days to ten days, or ten to fifteen. Longevity-wise, I kind of get it, we want those folks to stay. But then I jump to the management side, and I'm trying to follow that thought pattern. We have a lot of new directors.
Yes.
So, was the goal twenty-five days, so they stay beyond their retirement years? Eh, because I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand, why go from twenty days to twenty-five days? Unless, and I really try to stay out of operations, is that a, um, because the financial impact, as we said, is exactly the same if they take twenty-five days or not. But where it becomes a massive financial impact, if those folks don't take that week? Because then, essentially, they're getting another week's vaca- not vacation, they're getting a week's pay. So, you know, at a director level, that could be anywhere from thousand to fifteen hundred dollars a week. That's why I was asking, how many folks are we talking about? And the impact may not be really now, maybe like three people, who knows? But I get the goal, I think, keep these people beyond ten years. But then, is it, that financial impact could literally be forty thousand dollars? You know, so I guess that's why I'm like.
I understand.
Yeah, it, it's mathematically, I'm trying to navigate through it.
So.
I'm done.
But I, I think, I, I understand your point, but also, too, if you're gonna hold people hopefully longer, longevity, but, if you do, but if you don't, then you get new people in, and there's gonna be other jobs, they're gonna have better benefits years down the road. That's something else to look at, too, and they'll walk in the door and say, no thanks.
We're also assuming people stay in a safe place for fifteen, twenty?
We're hoping, yeah, yeah.
I think part of this, part, part of this discussion probably suffers a bit from the mayor not being here? Because, because he probably has a reason behind why he thinks these days are good, um, the, this number of days. I think, I know we have the motions to move them to the mayor and council meeting, but I don't know that we are ready. I think that there are those questions, I think it will be interesting to see the financial impact, because we are in budget season, and, um, to know how much this will impact our budget to change these days, based on who already doesn't take their vacation time. And, um, I think that that's a significant, like, information for, for us, for me anyways. And I think everyone has kind of touched on that, does that seem to?
I think financial is important, but I'm always rooting for the people. Give them what they want.
Um, Councilor.
Want them to stay?
Councilor Sheffield ha- has his hand up. Okay, Councilor Sheffield, you had your hand up.
Linda, as to comparison of, uh, the vacation time with the union members, is, is there, is there a similar, uh, vacation scale as well?
Well, from quick, quick responses, the beginning of the union vacation, um, awards are low. They move up during the years, and at the end, they could be at twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, once you've hit a certain age. Now, the thirty-fives, I mean, not age, but, um, length of service, thirty-fives are gone, thirties are still hanging around. Um, some twenty-fives are still hanging around, and there's nothing below twenty in the union contracts.
So, is their scale similar now, that it's lower, uh, you know, comparison to the salary folks? Is it similar, uh, scale of vacation time?
It's, it's hard to, to, to put that in one, one bucket, because, like I said, the first ten years might be slower for them to get the vacation time. One union in particular, they don't get anything until they've been here for one full year, then they get five days. That's, uh, we lost a person that, this year, just a couple months ago, who was ready to take the job, very well qualified. So, the vacation was, instead, you.
So the vacation was instead you're expected to work for a year without a vacation. So some of the, most of the unions are slow, slow to get going. Two, two weeks after, you know, a year or so for some of them. But it's heavier on the other end. The longer you stay, the more you get, just, just like this. And are you asking because you want to know what, which is better?
No, I mean, I figured as far as budgetary is, is it pretty much a trade-off? Not, not much of a trade-off between union and non-union. So it really, it shouldn't affect fiscally the city of Groton in any significant way as far as paying for vacations since the union members seem to have less vacation time at the moment than the salary folks to where, you know, there's not many, you know, high-tenured union employees to have to worry about paying a lot of vacation time.
Well, they don't, so, actually, some of the unions don't allow payouts. Some of the unions, it's what, sorry.
Okay.
Listen, Linda, I didn't care.
Some of the unions do not allow a payout or a rollover unless it's special circumstances.
Correct.
Right.
I would think that, so that's where it wouldn't be an expense for the city on that end of things. So I guess the real discussion is with the non-union.
Correct.
Whether that affects, you know, the bottom line.
Correct. So I guess that's what we'll work on.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think those are the things, the, the number of employees we have that, that already don't use their vacation time. The, the financial impact of that, not to say that, that we shouldn't still incentivize that, but to know what the impact on the budget's going to be because essentially we're kind of approving a budget change prior to budget season. Because I imagine we're not, you're going to have to absorb this in the budget somewhere, otherwise the budget has to go up.
Depending on when it's effective, it could actually be in the budget that's already prepared.
Okay. Either way, I, I think, I don't think that council, unless I'm reading the room wrong, I don't think the council is ready to move this to the December 5th meeting. Counselor Carter, did you have something else to add?
And I, I, I just wanted to be clear. So I, I actually think that when it comes to our salaries and directors, I think that everybody's, especially with now, with time, the way the world is inflation or whatever. I think we have to make sure every director is being paid what they're worth for starters. That's the beginning, the first thing, right? And then we can do all this other stuff and sprinkle in it afterwards. Because to me, I think, and I'm, I'm a municipal worker myself for the state. I mean, when it's all said and done, the twenty-five days, twenty to twenty-five days, people aren't staying because they get twenty to twenty-five days of staying because they get a good salary and they get a good pension or benefits after working here. So I think we need to look at, make sure what, make sure all this, all management is getting paid what they're worth and it's fair, right? And I think we may need to change the structure of how we're determining what somebody's, they're worth. And if it puts the years of service and everything else in. Because according to this, we're doing, okay, you, you work a certain amount of years, you get twenty-five days. But I know for certain that there's some directors that aren't being paid what they're worth in their years of service. So if we're going to do that.
That's what I hear.
We gotta do it all, we gotta do it all, we gotta do it all around, you know?
I, I think just to, to your point, Counselor Carter, I believe that, that we have been working on that, comparing salaries, yeah. And I, I know that we have discussed it in terms of, for example, economic development. That salary was lower than.
Oh, yes.
Any other person around doing that job. So I know that we already have been doing that and this is just part of assessing those benefits. But again, I, I think we have beat this horse to death and.
Well, it's done, and that's why I said across the board though, because there's, there's still certain, there's still some people that aren't getting paid what they're worth. So I think it has to be collective, so I stick with what I stand, it has to be across the board.
Okay, thank you.
So I will let the mayor know that we will want to put this on another count, I apologize. And I'll, I'll forward him the questions just to make sure he knows what we discussed and although he's probably going to watch our meeting. And then he can make sure that we, make sure that we get kind of a consensus next time or any. And I would encourage the counselors, if you have, if you want to put your input in writing, I think that will help the department heads to get their, their stuff together of exactly how we want them to analyze that data and get that information to us. I think that would be a good idea.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is reappointment of Beach and Parks Committee members. That should be fairly straightforward. We have two committee members. I have been, Counselor Piazza.
I was just going to ask, do we have to move on that not to bring it to?
Nope.
We don't have to.
Nope, we just, it can just go to the next committee, the whole meeting. Just, yeah, it, we just have the option to move it. Yeah. If we, if it was already at a mayor and council meeting, we would have to make a motion to table, table the thing. Yes, good question. We have two committee members for Beach and Parks Committee. I spoke with the clerk earlier, these people have been spoken to already. They have agreed that they would like to remain on Beach and Parks Committee. The Beach and Parks, our Parks Director, Mary Hill, is here if anyone has any questions. Do any of the counselors have any questions on these two reappointments? No? With that, can we move these at the same time, Counselor? I mean, Clerk Jacom? Or we have to move them separate?
I would just move, I would do separately.
Thank you, Clerk Jacom. All right, so the first one is appointment of Brian Clinton. Take a motion to move that to the mayor and council meeting of December 5th, 2022.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any nays, abstentions, motion carries. Next one is for Scott Nadeau. Take a motion to move that to the mayor and council meeting of December 5th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nays, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is ordinance 199 update. If we can have Director Hill and the police chief.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Counsel. So when cannabis marijuana became somewhat allowed in the state of Connecticut, the mayor started talking about putting an ordinance together to kind of address that. At one of our department head meetings, I mentioned that we already had existing ordinance for our parks that we could look at elaborating on that. So we, the police department only have just one document to look at for smoking. So I worked with the chief with all the documentation that he got from his document, what it, from the state. We did some cut and paste. And what we have in front of you today is our first round of like an update draft of where to go with the, the additional, not just tobacco items. So I did the cut and paste and get, put it in some kind of format and Chief Jenkins gave me all the information. So I'm going to let him kind of, if there's questions from the language, that it's up to the chief to answer the question. And so we kind of changed the title a little bit, it's not just parks now, it's public owned buildings in some of the recreation areas. Because it does affect quite a few different areas within the community.
So basically what it comes down to is with the, the Act 21-1, the public act in Connecticut, has added marijuana to places you cannot smoke. Wherever you cannot smoke now, they've added marijuana to it. So, and they have also extended other things such as vaping is included now, e-cigarettes are included now. One of the other items is restaurants that serve food indoors and/or alcohol. It's not just inside the building, but when they say an area, any area, that includes up to twenty-five feet outside of the door of that restaurant or bar. Some things are excluded. As you can see in the red on page one under definitions, it has smoking in a list of everything that is where you are not allowed to smoke and/or vape and/or anything with cannabis. Everything that is in red, like Mary Hill says, came right out of the, the act itself. So that's what we have, there's a lot in there. We kind of put it down into the basics. There is a penalty for, or a violate, for violation of this is a hundred and twenty dollar fine, which is set by the city. That would be an infraction if we were to violate somebody, they would get an infraction for a hundred and ten dollars, or, sorry, excuse me, a hundred and twenty dollars. And that would be through an officer's ticket book, an infraction, mail-in fine. We were for violating a city ordinance and that is a hundred and twenty dollars. And it would be just a penalty, mail-in fine.
Any questions from the counselors? Counselor McCabe.
I just happened to notice that not in any dog track area or. This is part of the cut and paste, other places?
This is the entire, yes. The, the act itself covers everything, so we wanted everything in it here, even though we don't have a dog track, even though we don't have certain things, we just put it in here. Like I said, it's the first draft, if we want to take things out, we can. But if we ever get a dog track, it's already in here. Not that we're going to get a dog track, but you never know. So we did leave everything in there, mental health facilities, healthcare institutions. You know, we don't have those except for doctors' offices down on Thame Street. But we put everything in here and we can cut out whatever we, we choose or you guys or the council decides that we don't need in here. But we thought, I thought it was best that we just covered everything right off the back.
Counselor Piazza.
So this is just for knowledge base on six, it says in it, in an area of school building or on the grounds of such school. So if you have a parent pick up and they're smoking in the car, that's allowed?
No, it's on the school grounds.
Okay, I just want to ask.
Any school ground, yep. Yes, any school ground, parent would not be able to smoke as they're picking up or vape.
Counselor Sheffield.
Yes, Chief, is there a distance for smoking outside the municipal building?
It's on any, it says in here, any public, any property owned or under the management of a municipality. So this is the grounds. It's, I would assume that the mayor could decide that it's part of the grounds. And they would have to go to the sidewalk that is not under the municipality's control, like the park, for example. If you went to Washington Park or the beach, anywhere in the park, you could not smoke because it's under control of the city. However, once you walk to the sidewalk, you would be able to. So I think that would be something that the mayor would have to decide. Like, I know we, there's a designated area out back for smoking. You know, is the mayor going to consider changing that or is he going to allow that? Because municipalities have a lot, a large variance in what they can do. They are allowed to make more strict rules, as in no smoking period of marijuana during work hours if they wanted to, which I think they should, but that's my own personal opinion. So that would be something he would have to address on the scope of the control of the city of Groton.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counselor McCabe.
So events like concerts in the park, I do know that there are probably people smoking. Most of the time they go up to the top of the hill or vaping, so that would be.
Correct.
Subject to fine.
If we get called because of a complaint, then we would, we would go out and investigate the complaint. If it's going on now, like you can't smoke in the park now. I don't remember the last time I got called because somebody was smoking in the park. But if we get called and we go out and we find somebody, then there's going to be an, you know, you know, either, we would use officer discretion, you know, knock it off, it's your first time, don't do it.
Right, right.
Or, you know, it's your third time, here's your hundred and twenty dollar fine.
And then we can make that known too, as we move forward, advertising it, you know, but when we put our advertisements out, it's a smoke-free environment. And so people would know that before they got there. That doesn't mean they can't walk up to the sidewalk on Mitchell Street.
Right.
Right, and do it. And still listen to the music.
Counselor Carter.
I would say with, with that, it's, 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 that was actually a good example, like right now somebody might be smoking, but there's nobody there, right? But it's more of a ground to have something, right? You have kids around or whatever, you're like, you're not supposed to be smoking here, so they can take action. But nobody's going to call somebody who's way up near the tennis courts and it's just them doing whatever they're doing, you know?
Counselor Norris.
I pause just a minute, see, does any of this include vaping?
Yes, it all includes vaping, vaping, e-cigarettes, any type of.
Okay. Page two, number E, a letter E, kind of lists of quite a few of the different items that came from the act.
And that was added in the bill from the.
Right, so the two things is, if we, I'm sure you have, so I'm just asking, compared any of this to what Board of Education has in their documentation?
I have not.
All right, I was just, I'm just saying we have the same terminology going on.
How many other towns have? I know you had one.
Well, Bristol, I know Bristol, Connecticut has one.
I think the town is working on one.
I think that, yeah, the town's working, there's a, we were kind of ahead of the curve at, in 2013 by doing, having our parks one. So it kind of helps us move forward with getting a, a little bit more buildings and facilities and stuff involved into this one, based on the act.
I'm sorry, not everybody would read the bill. It's three hundred and three pages long and sometimes it gets very confusing. So by having this ordinance already with smoking, we can just add it in because it goes with the bill that says wherever you can't smoke, you can't do marijuana or cannabis.
Yeah, and obviously I've not read what Board of Education has, I was just saying, is it similar in some regard? And then the last thing is, so is it you and the mayor are going to work out the specifics and come back? For example, is smoking allowed in the middle of the green here, yes or no?
Municipalities, where it says in here, let me see, I'm just taking it out of the bill. So municipalities can regulate on any property owned or under the control of the municipality, any activity deemed, deemed to be deleterious to public health, including the lighting, carrying, burning of lighted cigarettes. And so municipalities can do what they want.
No, I, I, I know that, I'm just going from the standpoint is, if we vote on this, is it potentially the mayor's going to come back two weeks later and say, I'm going to change?
Yeah, this is only a draft for you to look at. And have your input in and provide it to the mayor. And then we can all do it collaboratively and see what everybody agrees to, from my understanding.
Right, this would.
Let's give it to the council so they can read it and have input.
When the ordinance went in initially in June of 2013, it was, they started talking about it in April just to get all the, you know, language in place. So we got this far and we want input, the mayor wants input, the mayor wants your input. He wanted us to bring it to the council so that you guys could digest it, look at it, see if there's anything we've missed. Or anything that you, I mean, I, okay, yes, I said the same thing, Lisa, dog track, but you never, you never know what things might come in the future. And this way you don't have to, I mean, this has been in place for almost twenty, uh, ten years, it was 2013 and it's 2022 right now. So to make upgrades, this might still be here ten years from now and not that we, you know, we space for a dog track, but at least we have things covered in case other things established here in the community.
Such a, you know, correction facility, a halfway house, we have halfway houses.
So, I, I have a few questions. The.
The, in the beginning, the whereas is in the beginning talk about protecting the public health, safety, and welfare by reducing exposure to secondhand smoke. But then it talks about other nicotine products and cannabis products that have nothing to do with secondhand smoke. So to me, is the intent to prevent secondhand smoke or is the intent to keep people out of the parks that use these products?
I believe the intent is to
Or off public property, rather.
It's to facilitate the health and welfare of individuals that may not smoke and prevent them from getting vapors or chemicals that do come from vaping. I'm not a doctor, but I do have a study from the University of South Cali- California, Southern California, did a study on vaping. And what they said and what they have found is even though you do not get smoke, like smoking a cigarette, e-cigarettes or a real marijuana cigarette, e-cigarettes do produce a flume of white smoke, which may not contain the nicotine, so to say, or harmful chemicals. But it does have other items in it, such as nickel. Let me find my notes here, and so does vaping. So they have a study, let me see here. The one thing I didn't highlight. Okay, so you don't have to be super confined quarters with a vape experience and negative side effects. Let's see, not only contains nicotine, but also heavy metals, adaldehyde, and glycerin. Even though vaporizing companies try to paint these products as healthier way to go, they are, but they still, they don't hold the nicotine, but they still do little particles as well. And then there is, that's from the University of Southern California. So even the vaping has other chemicals, may not be nicotine, it may not be smoke, but you do get something from the vapor that is expelled from the individual that is vaping.
Right, so, but this section
Title from secondhand smoke to secondhand smoke, secondhand vape, secondhand
Well, this section E implies it, it's not just smoking, though. So would that include?
Sorry, section E, you said?
Yeah, so it talks about the tobacco and cannabis products. So would that include, like, there is like nicotine pouches that you can put in your mouth that has
Anything that would expel, it does not include brownies or gummies or edibles, I should say, edibles.
But this, that's, I, that's not how this reads to me.
In E, okay.
Right, because it says any, as well as cannabis, cannabis flower, cannabis trim, cannabis product, cannabis concentrate, cannabis-type substances, cannabis plant material. And, and in that section too, it says any product or formulation of matter containing biologically active amounts of nicotine or cannabis. Just to me, that seems very broad, and I completely agree with secondhand smoke. Like, that makes total sense to me. And I know I've been at the beach many times, and people will stand under the no-smoking sign and smoke, and it drives me bonkers. And it is very frustrating, that part of it. I, I also am not necessarily in favor of changing regulations that we don't already enforce. I actually, with this on the agenda, a couple residents asked me why we're changing or reviewing a law that we don't enforce already. Because, but to your point, you don't know someone's smoking on non-smoking areas unless someone calls you. So I, if someone were to call you because someone's smoking in a public place, I mean, chances are the cops are going to go down there and that person's going to disappear. So
Just like speeding. We don't, speeding is a violation. We don't give infractions every time. We don't enforce it. We enforce it by verbal, hey, stop, slow down, you know, put your seatbelt on. We don't necessarily give tickets all the time. We have a discretion. If we don't get a call and we go, we don't see them, obviously, we don't do anything. But if we go down, say, to the dog in the, in the beach area, get your, you know, get your dog on a leash, get your dog off the property. We'd like to give them a benefit of the break the first time, the benefit of the doubt the first time. Second time, you're not going to get the break. We've already told you once. So if I get called for somebody smoking an e-cigarette in the park, and I tell them to stop, I show up the next concert, and they're doing it again, we're going to enforce it because they know.
So then, so my next question is about medical use. Is there, was there any discussion in the state's statute or the act about medical use? Because my, we've, I've, we talked about this a while back when it first kind of came up, when the legalization first went through for marijuana. Because right now, it's decriminalized, and you can get a medical card and all of that. So was there any discussion on whether or not that's a violation of someone's rights under maybe ADA to ban use of the product? Because unlike cigarettes, marijuana can be used medicinally. So have we evaluated that? And that, yeah, that's my question.
Okay. I'll just read it from the statute itself or from the bill. And it does mention medical use. Like, right now, no individual person can grow marijuana plants. However, somebody that's a medical marijuana patient is allowed to grow sick plants for their use. Me, you, anybody else can't if they're not medically a patient. So as far as vaping goes, vape product does not include a medical or therapeutic, therapeutic product that is, A, used by licensed healthcare provider to treat a patient in a healthcare setting, used by a patient or prescribed or directed by a licensed healthcare provider in any setting, or any drug or device as defined in the Food Drug Cosmetic Act, such and such, as amended from time to time in combination of the scribes. So what that is, is it's a heating element. So I'd have to look deeper into this to see if it violates.
So there is a
If it does or it doesn't.
So there is a provision in there that discusses the medical use as opposed to recreational use.
If it is allowed or not, I didn't go that deep in it.
So I should, I, if, I'm just curious if there's been any opinion issued either by the ADA or other municipalities who've put a law in place of whether or not that is an issue, I guess. Because if it's not an issue, it's not an issue. But I, my thing is that smoking nicotine and smoking marijuana are not exactly the same. And part of that reason is it can be used medicinally. No one's using cigarettes medicinally, nicotine cigarettes. So I, again, am wary of making a rule. I personally know people who use medical marijuana in immediacy need. So like, so to me, yeah, so, so if someone's in, for example, at the beach and about to have a panic attack, are they allowed or not allowed to go to their car and use their medical marijuana?
So they can walk to the sidewalk.
Yep.
But not on beach property.
But would they disclose that? I mean, you, that, that's that, you got to make sure you're not infringing on their freedoms to say, oh, you can, oh, because we have a, we have a non-smoking policy across the board.
Right.
So I don't, it could be, if you, if you can walk down to the, where they're designated area, the beaches, and, and, and do it if you have to, but
Right, but I, my point is cigarettes are not medicinal, though.
Correct.
So that makes total sense. If you are craving a cigarette, it's not medically necessary for you to have one.
I just want to share something with this document. The whereas is weren't changed. That's all from the 2023. The whereas is will change once we understand the body of this ordinance, and that would change those whereas is. I didn't, Eric, sorry, Chief and I did not look at that part of it yet because we wanted to get the body of this language understood so then we could put the whereas is in the way, the right way in regards to addressing all the necessary things of this body of this.
But I'll look into that.
But we can, yeah, we, medical, we didn't get that far.
Okay, Counselor Carter.
Thank you. Um, so that the medical, the medical marijuana, so the key word on this, there's is, it says smoking, right? So smoking, we're talking about smoking. So anything you're smoking, whether it's fake, gummy, whatever you, whatever, smoking is prohibited. So it doesn't matter, they're just laying out all this stuff. Possession is different, right? We're not saying you can't possess it, you're saying you just can't smoke it. So, um, Deputy Mayor Depot is correct, right? As, as a law enforcement myself, it, it's very rare where you, you, you go and you cite somebody for smoking. But it's for our, it's for our kids, it's for the people that don't do that stuff, it's for public to have something there to say, you can't do this at the beach concert. You can't do this right here where people are eating. And it doesn't matter if it's medical or not because it's prohibited on private property. That's, that's, that's what this is. It doesn't, it doesn't matter if it's medical or not, it's private property. You can go to the sidewalk or you can go somewhere else to, to help your panic attack if that's the, the medical use of it, you know? But law enforcement, they're going to act on it. If somebody's smoking, if I come as a trooper and it says it's smoking prohibited in statute, doesn't matter if it's, if it's, if it's prohibited or not. You're not getting cited for having possession of it because you can have it. You just can't smoke it. And furthermore, you can't, whether you have a marijuana card or not, you can't smoke it in front of kids. You can't do that, that's a law, so.
Counselor McCabe.
Yeah, I'm still getting back to what Counselor Deputy Mayor Depot said about the secondhand smoke and vaping. I'm very much a non-smoker. I, I am uncomfortable around cigarette smoke, and I, I understand the, and, and feel the secondhand anxiety that, but with vaping, I, I, I don't have an issue with it. I can't smell it. I'm wondering, you know, if I, you have that study with certain chemicals, but what's the dissipation rate? I mean, from here to here, would I still get the chemicals? I mean, being, a lot of our smokers have started vaping to get away from the cigarette smoke and to be able to be at the concert or whatever. I'm just, I want to make sure that we're accounting for that.
Understood, but that's what the bill says. That's the state law has come out to include vape and e-cigarettes and anything. That's not us doing it. That's the state law that does that, the public act that the Congress created.
Part of that is
Counselor Carter, you don't have the floor. Can you, is it possible to send us via email the text of that?
Sure.
Act also.
Yep.
Counselor Norris, you had your hand up next. Well, you had, you had your hand up.
My, my, my question was, here's a perfect opportunity to, like Deputy, Deputy, sorry, Director Hill said, to go through all this. Because I'm looking at it, and I don't, I'm not into tobacco, so I need some help here. Where we talk about, you know, reducing exposure to secondhand smoke and whatever and is, but I look at like chewing tobacco, that's a negative look. It doesn't give smoke. So that's why I'm saying, do we need to look at?
Who says chewing tobacco, where?
It's in section E.
It's, yeah, that's in from the original, the original ordinance from 2013 had chewing tobacco. Anything that, yeah, that was, all that cigars, pipe smoke, tobacco, it was all in there from the original.
Everything is red, I don't know if you have a, yeah, everything is red is new.
Right, what I'm saying is, this is a good opportunity to potentially look at, you know?
It's the first draft.
Right.
So it's maybe three or four, five drafts. It's whatever we, and you, your input, our input.
But Deputy Mayor, if I could also say, the city of Groton was on groundbreaking process when they came up with this policy. Very few municipalities wanted to touch it or even have it. So I commend the Police Chief and Director Hill for doing this again.
Well, I think it's very smart to look at it before, before it becomes a problem because it potentially could after, I think, June or July or whenever it becomes recreationally
And we didn't have to start from scratch. We kind of had something that we could just kind of add to.
Counselor Carter, did you have something else to add?
Thank you. Um, so one, one, and like I have first acknowledged in this, so I'm just trying to add to the comment, so thank you for allowing me to speak. So one of the issues is when it comes to the, the e-cigarettes or the vaping or whatever, right? When somebody reports something, right? They're reporting smoke and somebody's smoking, right? So, so you can, okay, what do you have in your hand or whatever, all this stuff? So that's why they added all this stuff. So I understand what you said about the vapors and all that other stuff. When somebody's looking at in a crowd of people and they're like, maybe their kid might be near, they're looking at the, the smoke, right? And they're saying, so that's why it's, it's, it's in a blanket, like, all together, all together, one, whether it's e-cigarettes, vaping, or whatever, right? It's just tough to investigate or to weed out, you know? And furthermore, some of the people have two or three or more items on them at the same time, you know?
Counselor Piazza, did you have something else?
Yes, thank you. So when I look at this as, as far as a nurse, and we're talking about secondhand smoke, secondhand vape, whatever, I, I also look at, when you're talking about possession, it's different possession, but also a lot of people are not responsible. Like, I can't tell you how many times I see, even on school grounds, e-vape products on the ground. Actually, one of my students on the bus thought it was a lighter and was going to go pick it up, and one of the other students said, don't pick it up, that's e-vape. And I was like, yeah, it probably is an e-vape thing. So I think, you know, that's something else we need to look at. You know, if they don't have it, they can't smoke it, then, you know, it's less likely it's going to be disposed on public property where a child may get a hold of it. So it's not just what's in the air, we're also looking at what they can come in contact with. You know, so I, I think it's great that they're looking at it, but, you know, it's just, that's another avenue to look at.
Any other, Ron?
Just real quick, something that we've been trying to do with ordinances is pull the fine amounts out of them and put those through as resolutions. So if you want to change the dollar amount, you don't have to go through the whole ordinance process. It's just something that has been looked at and we've been trying to do. So just a thought that if we can do that as a resolution, so you can change, it's a lot easier to change it.
Oh, so you're saying the final draft maybe shouldn't include the fine number?
Right, where has that dollar amount? Because now if you want to change that dollar amount, you have to go through the whole ordinance process again to post it in the paper twice and all the stuff with it, as opposed to just doing it through a resolution.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Good point.
Has there been discussion on whether to change that fine amount? It's ten years old, that's not that old, I suppose.
I have not had any discussion on the fine with the mayor at all.
And actually, that reminded me of another question that I had that I forgot. How, do you know about how many fines we give in a year for cigarette smoking on public property?
I did not run that, and I have
I'd just be curious to know what it is.
I, in my thirty-three years that I've been here, I've never given one.
Okay.
We don't get a lot of calls of smoking in the park. Or when we do, they'll be at the beach, and we'll go down to the beach, and that, oh, they left because we told them we were calling to leave.
Right, yeah.
They left.
That or they put it out.
They put it out.
I mean, a cigarette, you can put out before, you know, it is hard, so.
Yeah.
We don't have the ability as the staff at the beach. We do, we do cut off a lot of people smoking at the beach, but we don't have the ability to find them.
Or a lot of times
Oh, you'd have to call the police department.
Right, put it out, or we're going to call them.
It's kind of tough, though.
Yeah, so, I mean
Or you're going to get, or you're going to leave, like noise complaints, I don't know.
You can kick them out, though. We can, if, if we, they, we, if we're repeatedly going up to them, asking them not to, to smoke, we have asked them to leave. Or if we get multiple complaints from the same person, you know, about the same person. Or we'll show them where to, we'll direct them where to go, where they can go off property. It's, there's a bench, and I'll
Dispenser thing, yeah, right around the, yeah.
So we kind of direct them where they go, you know? Then they'll be the ones that will sit on the corner of the playground inside, and they'll be close to the bench, but not right where they're supposed to be. So, but we don't have, but we, we get, we can, you know, we can control that to some degree at the, you know, during the season. But it is hard, we can't, we don't have the ability to find, so.
And for me, and for my guys and girls, I prefer corrective action on the first time than instantly finding it, except for speeding, that's crazy, you know? A large amount of speeding, very fast, but I'd rather have the corrective action than I'm not doing it, a little education before they get fined.
So so I think to um Counselor Piazza's point, I think um I, and this isn't a criticism of the wherestes cuz they're not, they weren't really reviewed, but um to somehow modify that to include the intent of protecting from, you know, trash that people might drop or
Sure.
product that people might, instead of it just being about secondhand smoke. Because to me, it being just about secondhand smoke, the rest of it doesn't make sense to me.
And that's what brings up all these questions.
Right.
Yep.
It's just if you incorporate more, it, I think for people to hear it some, that they'll say, oh yeah, it's not just about secondhand smoke.
Right.
It's like it's on the ground.
Yeah, like most, you know, smoking product waste, I mean, it's sometimes, as soon as that, you know?
Yeah, cuz that is a good um point, cuz how many people throw stuff on the ground?
We can lose it if we can make it more tight.
Yep.
Um
Good idea.
Yep.
I think, does anyone have any other comments? And I think this will probably be discussed at another future Cal with some changes and I don't know, more discussion with the mayor after him
Yep.
reviewing what we
Cuz he has actually seen this.
This draft?
Correct. He he knew it was coming to y'all, but I don't know how
It be here for this
For this meeting, for you guys.
Well, he knew I would have questions.
So, um but I don't know, I mean, he got an email to him whether he looked at it when he was on the case, I don't know.
Well, we've discussed smoking in the park before, because I I have stopped people, I've told people to stop smoking, especially at the beach. At the beach, I feel like it's so egregious because it travels across the entire beach because of the breeze. And it's really just as a a non-smoker and I've never smoked and I don't enjoy the smell, it's really frustrating when people stand under the no smoking sign and smoke cigarettes. Um I dislike it. Um but I think um a- again, it's smart to get out ahead of it, so um that's good. So no other questions on this? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next thing is police department. You're stuck here with us.
Okay.
All right, so this is the, yes, because he has some more to do.
I got the seat comfortable.
Mm-hmm. Okay, go ahead.
Well, this is one.
Just one, no, you have two.
Well, it's all in one. Okay, what I have is a resolution that the mayor and council accept the emergency management performance grant, the sub-grant award, the amount of ten thousand dollars and zero cents, and the supplemental emergency management performance grant, and the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and forty cents from the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security of one eleven Country Club Road, Middletown, Connecticut. And Mayor Hedrick, Mayor Keith Hedrick be authorized to sign such documents. So what this is, is the ten thousand dollars is the uh supplemental income for the emergency management director, his salary for running the EM, being the emergency manage, management director for the city of Groton. Uh the thirteen thousand is a supplemental uh I amount of money that they provided for such things as training, supplies such as COVID test kits, masks, gloves, anything that we would utilize for uh emergency management within the city of Groton. So it is our request that the mayor be able to sign any and all documents and sign this document and any future documents for those type of grants.
Any counselors have questions about that?
Uh future documents, oh, sorry.
Counselor Piazza.
Thank you.
Future documents, you're saying, how far are we going, future documents?
Uh is related to, this is a yearly thing. This is a yearly application.
Gotcha.
So instead of asking every year, I'll present it, I'll tell everybody and for approval, and then you can just sign it.
Counselor Norris, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I'm looking at the notice of grant award, and in the middle section, it says, it says start date ten one twenty, end date nine thirty twenty-one.
I believe what it is, is it's backdated.
Okay.
This is approval for the last year's or the previous one.
Oh.
And then at the end of this year, we'll get this year's one.
Okay. All right.
If I'm correct.
Yeah, cuz it does say the date of federal award was August twenty twenty twenty.
Yeah, so it's a reimbursement.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a reimbursement.
Reimbursement for funds that were already expended.
Correct, as part of the backup that we submit is the payroll detail.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions on this? So we actually have two things to move separately. So the first one is specific to this year's um grants that we need to accept. And then the second one is gonna be the mayor's authorization for future signing of the documents
Mm-hmm.
related to grant, receiving grants. Does that make sense? So we'll uh take a motion for the first one to accept this um this year's grants, uh a motion to move that to the mayor and council meeting of December fifth, twenty twenty-two?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, abstentions, motion carries? And then for the next motion to allow um Mayor Hedrick to authorize and um to execute and deliver all the documents um for a future of such grants, I'll take a motion to move that to the mayor and council meeting of December fifth, twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
Nope, second.
Any discussion? Counselor Norris?
So what we're saying here is that in the future, this won't come to us. It'll just go through the mayor's office and they'll take care of it.
This specific grant will come to us for informing, but we won't have to keep voting for the mayor to sign for this grant.
Got it.
Cuz we apply for it every year.
To you. Got it. Yeah, you're not, we're not skipping the council in any way, shape, or form, it's just having to go back the second week.
Mm-hmm.
And just have them sign it. If you guys approve and girl.
Right, so we don't have to, once, once this goes through, we don't have to vote again to let Keith sign it to have it go through. Mayor Hedrick, does that make sense? All right, I have a, uh Counselor Sheffield, did you have a question?
Uh yes, I was under the impression that the mayor um had that authority to execute as it is. I wasn't sure why there was a a reauthorization.
We always vote on this two times, we vote on it to accept the grant and then we vote on it to allow the mayor to sign for the grant um and to sign other documents, because those other documents aren't prepared yet until we accept the grant. So this is voting so that we don't have to authorize it after those documents that we already know are gonna be drafted for him to sign. We're voting for him to be able to sign those when they come in.
Yeah, but what what this resolution states is all agreements, documents, and grants. So I'm not sure.
It's specific to the Department of Emergency Services.
I thought you already had that authority anyway, so I'm trying to figure out why the resolution. That's my take.
Do you know, Ron, um Yuhas? Why we always have to get the second approval? Is it the amount?
Just looking at this, it, I believe what it may be doing, and again, I'm just looking at it briefly now, is the first one is allowing them to apply for the grant. And then the second one is if they are awarded the grant, it allows the mayor to execute the grant documents. Is what what I'm thinking is the reason for the two, but but not positive on that.
Right. It uh cuz I, and we've had this discussion before about receiving money, why the council has to vote on receiving money, like we don't want money. Um but because it's in the charter, I believe, or it's it's, we looked it up before, that somewhere we have to authorize the receipt of grants and
Right, and you'd wanna know where the funds are coming from as well.
Because, yes, so so that's why, but um so one is for the application of said
We have to get approval for it to apply.
Yes.
And once we receive it, now the mayor's gotta sign for it, that yes, I said it was okay to do it, now you can have it, I believe.
Right, so that's why there's, that's why there's two. So one is is authorizing the application of the grant and one is authorizing the mayor to execute what's awarded from the grant.
The approval of the link for it.
That's why, that's why there's two. Does that make?
Well, yeah, I could, yeah, I can understand that part why there's two, but I mean, as far as in the future, I guess you, we're authorized to give him the sign any agreements, but it wouldn't have to have consent of the council? Is that what this is stipulating?
Should be specific.
This is just to this grant, um from the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. So it's specific to this grant.
And and
But but what about future grants regarding homeland security? Would that also, the mayor would be able to execute those agreements without consent of the council?
Didn't you say this was a repeat?
Could that's, and the second resolution under the whereas, in order for the city of Groton to be able to apply for grants, authorization is necessary to be granted to the mayor and city of Groton to make applications for these grants. So it is any other grants through that that agency, it appears to be, which I'm not sure which other ones you apply for.
Just the one that we always get every year for Millstone, which we get the cameras from, which goes to present it to the council first.
Okay, so there could be future um a group, you know, awards or whatever coming from the em- emergency management, homeland security. So with that, if that is indeed the case, then the mayor would be allowed to execute it without consent of the council?
We would have to get the council's consent to apply for the loan, or for the grant, I should say. And then once they agreed that, yes, you can go for it, then when it comes in, I believe, cuz I don't have that in front of me, it allows the mayor to go ahead and sign it, cuz we've already agreed to go for it.
Right, so this would, it, I mean, the way I read it and I think what Finance Director Yuhas said is this would allow the mayor to sign, once we've authorized applying for the grant, we wouldn't have to, for this specific agency, we wouldn't have to then authorize him to sign it, we would just have to vote one time instead of two.
I believe so.
But but only for this agency.
But it, when I, when I apply for the grant, I tell, I explain what it's for, what we're getting and what the money
Right, we're still voting on it, we're still voting on um applying for the grant. Counselor Carter?
So what I'm looking at is that it was it, and maybe just that uh Counselor Sheffield might have just caught something, I I think this is still specific to this grant. I wouldn't think that it's every grant for the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, but there's been other grants of this, there's been other grants of not specific to this that we've received from from the departments of
Homeland.
Yeah, of homeland security. So uh maybe it was just reworded to not specifically talk about this grant particularly. Do you see what I'm saying? Because if we're gonna do this with Department of Homeland Security, we can do this with every agency that that comes to from the government or whatever else and we just leave it blanked, like a blanket, does it see what I'm saying? Cuz we've gotten a lot of things, why is this specific just to this? I think, I'm thinking that the way it was written up was meant for us to understand that it was for this
And it was a yearly thing.
The, exactly.
It's a yearly grant we go for every year.
But it's not written that way, it's written that
More broad?
That Ron said is that, well, essentially, it's 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 written, written that pretty much anything. You know, so I think it's maybe just rewording what this is saying. And then maybe, though, it does put us to a further discussion that, yeah, we do wanna, we do want to look at who we're accepting things, but if it's a government entity, right, maybe we should just automatically, you know, leave it up to the mayor to go ahead and approve it. It shouldn't have to come to us, you know what I mean?
So I think maybe that's a discussion for the December fifth meeting. Um but in order to accept this grant, I don't see any reason why we can't move, still move it to the December fifth meeting, but I think that's a question maybe for that meeting, whether or not we wanna make this more specific or more broader, or what? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can look, we can look into the history.
I prefer having it more specific to this particular um resolution instead of having, you know, execute all agreements, which like I said, it seems like if there's more down the line, you know, the mayor can sign off, but will will the council have input as to, you know, voting on it? So I wasn't sure of that.
Well, I I, like I said, I I think that
Could you amend it?
It, well, yes, so I think that it will be more clear when the mayor explains it, but we still will have to vote on applying for the grant and and accepting the grant. This second motion authorizing the mayor, I think the thought was maybe that it seems redundant because we're already voting on applying for the grant. Obviously, if we're voting to apply for the grant, we're gonna vote to have the mayor sign the agreement to receive the grant. But I think there's no reason why we, uh in the, in the December fifth meeting, if we want to add wording, we can vote on an amended motion then. Um I don't think it's the best idea to delay another, cuz it would be delayed more than a month if we don't move it to the December fifth meeting, is my thought. Ron?
Well, I mean, we could certainly vote on the first resolution because it already stipulates Mayor Hedrick to authorize it. So that's, that's already given, it's the second one to where execute all agreements, which we don't know, you know, we weren't uh privy to additional agreements or or grants coming, moving forward, then that's something different. So I could see moving forward one and tabling the other to get more clarification.
Well, uh we don't need to table a motion cuz it's not, we're, the mayor and council meeting, we're voting on the motion specifically, but um this, this second motion, we already voted on the first motion. This second motion is specific to the Department of Homeland or Emergency Services, Services, Public Protection, Homeland Security. It's specific to the grants that our police department applies for um under that provision. Counselor McCabe?
Can we just request that the wording for the next meeting just include the specific name of the grant?
Yeah, this is just to move it.
And just move it, and then we should have a broader discussion later about not having to vote twice or, you know, that that's
It it does seem, it does seem redundant, even, you know, that Mayor Keith Hedrick be authorized to sign such document. It does seem a little redundant. I think that um like I said, we can amend it at the December fifth meeting. If we don't move it to the December fifth meeting, then it pushes that, this process off. And we obviously are accepting this grant, we want to accept the grant, that's the intent, so. Um I would say bring your questions or or email the mayor um if you have specific changes that you wanna make to it. Um email before the next meeting and he can um present us an amended motion if necessary, or we can amend it at the meeting if necessary, I think that makes the most sense. So I have a um motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All nays? Abstentions?
One abstention.
So that passes four zero one. And that is it for you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Have a good night. All right, next on the agenda is Groton Utilities, um Director Gadei.
I use all mine.
All right, I got you.
Time off is more valuable.
Got you.
I think the first one you have on your list is Medici.
Mm-hmm.
So each year about this time, we renew uh the lobbying services that GU retains. We've been using Medici with Mark Dabella is actually the lobbyist. Um we have him each year, he, in the seven years I've been here, he has gone up in his price once during that seven years. Um it was a very interesting conversation we had as we were going through the CMEC budget when uh CMEC also hires a lobbyist each year. And um one of the questions brought up by one of the um people on the board was um why does uh municipal or public entities have a lobbyist uh when they can talk freely with um uh the government representatives and all that? Um and as a general rule, municipalities, mayors rule, municipalities' mayors do not use lobbyists. However, entities that operate in a municipal environment such as the MDC, CMEC, Groton Utilities very often do need to lobby to help discuss with politicians and elected representatives, different things that go on to represent our customers. And there are laws that go through, that do affect rates and things such as that. Plus, we're good supporters of different things that happen on the waterfront that often, you know, we, the lobbyists will say, hey, this, these things are going through. Do you support them? And go, oh, yes, we support a new peer at the subbase. You know, we support, support the, the ferries that run and stuff like that. So, a lot of different things are budgeted by the state that come up that we get involved in, and our lobbyist keeps us informed of. He actually came to the utility commission meeting and made a presentation and had a discussion with them for a while at the meeting. We've never done that at this level. But that's what this service is for. The price hasn't changed in several years now, and it's an annual January 1st through the end of the calendar year. And we do budget it each year.
Any questions on this? Counselor Piazza?
So, does this have the same, where has the, when you spoke about it before, three bids, are we looking outside of this? This is the only lobbyist? Are we looking at other lobbyists? Is that, are we required to look at other lobbyists before we actually say we're gonna just retain this one?
As a service, we do not bid this.
Okay.
Did we bid it originally when we?
I'm, I'm unsure. We've used Medici for twenty, I think, over twenty-five years. It's more than twenty, I know.
So, it's not a bid. It's just we're retaining? It's just, so we just changed the verbiage like, so we went from bid to, along the years to retaining?
Similar to, I think there are several services that we don't bid every year. The purchase.
The purchase policy does not require services to be bid.
Right. It's, that is, applies to purchasing items, yeah, materials. So, that, it's, the purchase policy applies to materials. Counselor Carter?
I was, I was talking with, with Counselor Piazza. It's, I'm assuming that, and I know you're not, you're not sure about, I'm sure we wouldn't bid, bid a lobby service, right? That's different than.
Why'd you say it earlier than this?
You, you, you could bid any service, and then you could actually do a bid award based on quality of service.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
And different things like that. So, it may not be.
Wouldn't be, it wouldn't particularly be a financial, you know, what the lowest bidder, because that doesn't mean they're retaining high-quality services. I mean, this is, it's different than getting work done in a building, right?
Right. When you, when you put out, or like that'd be an RFQ, request for qualifications, and you would, you would score it, and it wouldn't be, the fee would be a part of it, but that may only be ten percent of your scoring piece of it. It may be their experience, the, the history that you've had with them, and taken just their proposal in general. So, there could be a lot of different things that factor into it. It doesn't necessarily have to be just financial-based.
I, I was just gonna say, I would think something like lobbying would be if you are unsatisfied with their work product, but I know there's been a few things in the legislature in the last couple of years that I've looked into, that the lobbyist has been involved in, like informing us, keep us informed of what's going on, and we have a relationship with them. So, I would think that it would probably harm the utility to switch lobbyists to. You wouldn't necessarily want to keep bidding that out because that relationship forms over time also.
He, he also knows the storylines that, of things that we've been involved with, with us and GU and CMEC have been involved with. And he, he keeps a continuity in that when someone in the legislature thinks about Groton, they actually reach out to Mark, whether it's related to, usually just about the utility, but it could be related to other things. They know Mark represents us, and that continuity helps us in the communication flow.
Counselor Piazza?
So, I understand all the functionality of it, what the function of it is, the purpose of it. I'm just going back to understanding. So, it sounds like, what you had stated is that what we actually bid on is a qualification card. Do you, how many checks do you get that, well, this doesn't fall underneath a bid? This is a retention or a service that we pay for, and we're just presenting it to you?
We did not do that, but just a mechanism to do if you were, were unsatisfied, or if you were seeing significant price increases over the years, and you're like, all right, we need to reevaluate. That would be a mechanism to do that, where it wouldn't be based on price alone.
Yeah, because I was just looking at the bid because it was brought up first that, well, we, we bid, when we first started using, we bid for this LLC, and now we're not bidding. So, I just didn't know where that changed, that's all. And then, earlier, we were talking about bidding, that we actually get three, and why hadn't we? So, that's why I'm just looking at the, obviously, the verbiage changed somewhere.
Well, that's for materials, and, yeah, that's not for like a service. Also, on the form, it says it is a sole source.
So, is that something we find in the charter?
The purchase agreement?
As far as what we bid on, what we don't. Because I think you mentioned, like, in the charter, it's bidding, right? When you.
That's not in the charter. That is a purchase agreement. That's a purchase policy that we have in the city.
Correct, and in a state statute.
Right.
As well.
I forgot what I was gonna, oh. Is it possible, because I know I've been on the council since 2017, and I don't think I've ever met the lobbyist. Would it be possible sometime in the next year to have him come to a committee of the whole and do a short presentation?
Sure. I wouldn't think that's a problem. Mark loves.
Not that it's urgent, but I think it would be nice to, for us to hear like what, how he interacts with the legislature and how that helps us as a utility. I think that would be helpful information for the council.
Remember his purpose. You're asking him to do what he does. So.
Right.
He, he loves talking, and he loves getting to know people, and the more people he gets to know, the more people he gets to know. That's what he does.
We'll bring this spot a tee for him.
So.
We, we won't rush through it, but often it's helpful to do it when there's things going on at the legislature, because then he has things to talk about. Right now, it's all kind of dead.
Right.
Except for this week, maybe.
But, yeah, sometime in the next, maybe sometime in the next year, maybe just pitch it to him and say, when you think it would be a valuable time to do a presentation, like if something's particularly active.
But we don't want to infer that he works for the city. He's really representing the.
The utility.
Utility at that point.
Right. But as, yes, we are fiscally responsible for the utility. I think it would be helpful for us to see what he does. Any other questions on this topic? I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting December 5th, 2022?
So.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next.
So, annually, we, we renew our Harris or North Star billing and customer service system. We call it the CIS system, Customer Information System. When anyone calls into customer service, they dial four thousand, someone picks up. You'll say your name, they'll type your name in, and your account will, your, your account will pop up in front of the customer service rep, and they'll be able to check into your billing, see how many times you've called, what issues you've had, and all that. So, it, and it's the system that generates the bills. So, and the bills are custom done at the utility and printed there before they mail out. So, this is the system that does that. This is the annual renewal for that. And it is a sole-source computer system.
Thank you.
Counselor Piazza?
I'm not sure if it deals with this, but, so you used to be able to, and I'm not sure to incorporate this, and if it doesn't apply, just let me know. So, we're talking about you call, they pop up your name, and your calls and so forth, or whatever, and your billing. But you used to be able to access it, your own bill. You know, I used to be able to look at it, compare it, where am I hide, blah, blah, blah. And I used to do it actually quite frequently, but now I haven't been able to access it. So, they said, oh, we're working on it. And it's been like six months or so. And when I came actually to, I came in person just recently. I was like, oh, yeah, I'm just paying. And then I'll ask them about it, and it kind of came across like it wasn't gonna be done, like you're not gonna be able to access it. I can access my account, but I can actually look at the payments per se. You see, be able to look at your history of payments and so forth and so on. And that's basically the answer I'm getting is, first it was working on it, and then, no, 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 that's not, that's not gonna be a service that's gonna be provided basically anymore. And I didn't understand the reason behind that.
I'm not sure about rolling into the future because Harris is in the process of doing a, a backbone upgrade from the core of the system up. So, I'm pretty sure that's gonna change. The old system where we used to allow you to log in like that had a security glitch, and it's one of the reasons that they're upgrading the system from the ground up is there's a, for lack of a better term, there's an add-in that was not a secure, secure, and it could allow a path into the core network. So, they took that part of the system down.
Okay. Well, that's a good answer.
That's a very simple way of putting it.
Okay.
On a very complicated thing that we dealt with for three or four months. And we, it was basically RIT that found it, discovered it, and drilled into it and made them take it down.
So, right now, you can't go online and view your bill?
You can't get to certain online portals the way people used to.
You can type in your account number, and you can, it'll tell you what you owe, or you have a credit or whatever. So, what I did is I came here and I said, is it possible I could get my bills? And she's Alfred Bock. I said, I asked from January, and she was kind enough to print those out for me. But, I mean, just to avoid that step, but it's something I could have done at home if I wanted to print it, I could. But I was just, you know, before I thought maybe, they said it was just a glitch in the system. And then, when I asked there, I was like, oh, well, I'm here, you know? And it was kind of like the answer was like, no, you're not gonna be able to do it.
Yeah. We have not been able to get them to figure out a patch for that.
Yeah.
Yet.
So, yeah, I can't look at the payments or anything.
That's why you had two different versions of the answer. There are people that still think they're gonna fix it, but we're waiting so long.
Counselor Norris?
Hi. I'm trying to get to the definition here, sole-source provider, because North Star Billing isn't the only company that does this, are they?
No, but you, you don't go into, it would be like swapping our financial system?
Well, yeah, that's what, yeah, I get that. I was just trying to say, why are you saying it was a sole-source provider versus just saying it's a maintenance? But I was just asking.
Right. We're just saying, we're, we're not.
Well, the, the purchase is from Harris Computer Systems.
Right.
Because they are the one, they're a sole-source provider for the North Star billing system.
Okay.
Which we have to renew this contract unless we were to change our whole system around.
No, I get it. I was just.
Right.
Yeah, no, I do get that. I was just saying.
And, and as you can see, it allocates to all the portions of the business as, as appropriate.
Any other counselors have questions on this? I don't, take a motion to move it to the mayor and council meeting in December 5th, 2022?
So, move. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? Motion carries. Last one.
The last one is not a sole source. It's a preferred vendor. It's a vendor who we trust and who we have bid this service before and has done the best overall performance. Phaser Engineering is being hired to actually do all the testing on all the new control setup for the new substation. So, when they set it up, all the breakers, the relays and controls have to be tested to be sure all the wires are connected correctly, and then be tested to be sure they trip as designed at the appropriate settings. So, they do the settings and make sure that the settings are validated, and then they actually do a, a test to make sure it happens.
Any questions on this?
I'll just say, I took a tour with Josh Rarig of a lot of the utility projects, and just watching the interaction we, between different vendors for the same project, we, he took me on a tour of one of the places, and on our way back, we had to move out of the way for this vendor, and this vendor came in to do their part. So, I, you know, I think it's interesting, and I know that Josh said if any of the other counselors want tours of Groton Utilities, things to just send him an email. It is really cool to see like all the stuff we approve, like what the actual physical project is.
There, there is more going on now than probably in twenty, twenty-five years, especially with everything at the substation.
So, all that to say, I think, you know, using our preferred vendors for projects that have so many moving parts is probably fiscally very responsible. Any other discussion on this from any of the counselors? Counselor Piazza?
So, once again, I just wanted to ask, so when are we saying for the three bids and not, I mean, we say this is a preferred vendor, but is there being fiscally responsible to say we need three bids?
Can you explain what other?
Maybe I'm missing that.
Yeah, what other services or products have we purchased from Phaser? Because this isn't the first time we've, we've seen them.
No. We, we use Phaser basically to validate all the substation equipment in the substations. And once you, we've actually, as recently as within the two years, we had a competitor of Phaser come in to try them out, and we ended up bringing Phaser back in to redo the work on a much smaller job, but the quality wasn't there. And when, you're, you're dealing with the voltages and everything dealing in the substations, the substation, we call them the substation guys. The substation guys do not, they know when they're dealing with a quality person. They know when they're not. They know when someone comes in, and then they, they can trust them to say, jeez, I'm not, I'm really not comfortable that this is working correctly. They want, we need them to tell us that truthfully so that we can get another opinion, replace the gear if it's old or anything like that. And Phaser is the only one that we've found that really does it well lately. We, they helped rebuild one of the transformers after another vendor screwed it up.
Right. And I get all that. So, if we always say, okay, we're gonna use these, oh, so these, we don't have to bid on them. These are the plates we're gonna use, blah, 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 but the mics, blah, blah, blah. So, this one, even though these are best mics, and we've used them for twenty-five years, are we still responsible to say we need to do three bids? That's what, that's basically what I'm asking. I agree to keep valuable, high-quality people and services and vendors, but are, what is the, what is the track we're supposed to, by city council ruling, supposed to do? Are we supposed to get three bids on this? And to know that you did and that we're voting on that? Because I don't want to vote on something that, as a counselor, I haven't been presented three bids when we're supposed to. That's all I'm saying. I'm, I'm all for keeping quality people, but, you know.
Well, you can get three bids and deny them.
Well, well, can I ask Ron Yuhas to clarify, but the, the three bids is an internal policy and a state policy for work, right?
There is a state statute for competitive bidding, yes, as far as for, for goods.
So, but as a council, our vote, like on, on this, we're voting, so to me, to me, I see the, the three bids, they've, Phaser's already worked on this project. Part of the issue is this is such a big project that we have to vote on a bunch of stages of it. So, we don't, when we have a multi-phase project, if we have a vendor for a part of it, and we've bid at the beginning, we don't always do three bids for like phase two of a project if a company's already done that same work for the, right? Isn't that how we usually do it?
There have been times where we've done that. Usually, it depends on what the project is. You would want to look at that. But, yeah, there are times where a company has done phase one, and then we've moved on to a phase two just because of additional things that have come up.
Because, because this isn't a new project. So, like, to me, it, what doesn't make sense to bid on the.
Right. And I get that. So, we've been and said, yes, we want this company to go through this project, and we're happy with them. I can see that. But, but then also, I'm hearing that, well, at one stage, we had, you know, Company A, but now we want to switch over to B. And what was the reason behind that? What's the history behind that? We went with B because they're cheaper. We went with B because we weren't happy with A, blah, blah, blah. So, I'm looking at, sometimes we're bidding, and sometimes we're not. So, I want to be a responsible counselor to know that I'm walking step A, B, and C that I'm required to, to know, and I'm required to follow. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah. So, I think the first time. Yeah, so I think the first time we voted on something for Phaser, I think we did discuss that exact thing because we were replacing a vendor with Phaser, right? And at that time, did we go out for bids for it, or we?
We, we have bid these services before, not long ago, and right now, we're using Phaser because they're preferred. And that's, that's the way Josh wrote it up, is they're a preferred vendor, and by the purchase and policy, the director can approve a preferred vendor request, bring it to council, and have it approved.
Right, so they are preferred because they've done this similar work already on the same exact project.
Very similar things right now, and a very critical process. If we had time in another situation, we, and it was a large bid such as this, we make out, hey, let's make sure we go out for a bid and put that into the timeline factor.
So I think the answer to Counselor Piazza's question is, there, we do want to do three bids, but in the purchase agreement, there's discretion to use preferred vendors for the director when it makes sense in a situation like this, but it still has to be approved by us because he's still got to tell us why he's doing that.
And our verbiage says that.
Yes, in the, yeah, purchase agreement. Does that make, that answer your question?
It does, if it says it in there, I mean, I mean, I'd have to have somebody pull that up and show that it said the verbiage, because obviously, it wasn't something I voted on.
We have received a copy of the purchase agreement.
Yeah, the purchase and policy is 1-0-0-4.
Or the purchase policy? Do you want them to send you a copy of it?
Well, I'm just saying, so did the verbiage say, so we're going to use these people because we have these, this many phases, so we're going to use it all? You know, they're going to do phase one, phase two, phase three, as an example, and we, and it was voted on yes, and then, in the meantime, we're going to da-da-da-da-da, and we're going to bring it to council, so that verbiage was in it, we'll bring it to council that we prefer them to continue with this, or we have to shift, or whatever it is. You know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm, well, I think logistically, we have to bring each project that's over this amount, you know, over the purchase amount, but there's no, in the purchase policy, it has that written in, that there's a discretion of the director for preferred vendors.
Yeah, any purchase on the utility side that's over 50,000 currently comes through account, it goes through the UC approval process, and then with their recommendation, it comes to the council for approval.
Counselor Carter.
Yeah, I just want, so, so, so actually, what, um, this is actually the process, like, for that. So he's come, um, the director's coming to council, in my experience, he's coming to council, and these questions that any of us have, whether it's, we can ask those questions, okay, why, why wasn't there a bid? And then you either vote yes, no, or you abstain, and it's simple as that. That's why we have this, you know, so.
Right, right. Any other discussion on this item? I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting December 5th, 2022.
Some move.
Do I have a second?
I want to get a real start.
Anyone would like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? Motion carries. The very last thing on the agenda we have been delaying for a long time.
And we did, and we did talk about these last, we did review the first quarter.
Sorry, Ron, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
We did go through the September 30th, the first quarter at the last mayor and council meeting, so I know we're now at nine o'clock. I can give you a very quick overview, like, on the general fund side, everything is pretty much consistently, the accounts that are below the percent remaining are all just based on timing of one-time payments, city day, the summer program, so there's nothing that is really out of line from year to date on the general fund side. Again, if you, anybody has questions on any of these and they want to shoot an email, that's fine as well, but there's really nothing on the general fund side. And then the utilities, everything is pretty much the same as the first, end of the first quarter. If you want me to go through them, I will. It's up, completely up to the council. Or if you have, if you don't want to go through them and you have questions and you want to send them, that.
We'll send them.
Aye. Well, I, does, do any of the counselors have any questions about the city financials or the utility financials that they want to ask the director while he's here? Looks like we're happy to read through it ourselves and email if we have questions.
Absolutely.
Counselor Sheffield, are you good with that? Okay.
Are you good with that?
I am, I can email my questions to the director. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, guys, sorry it was so late. Have a good night.
You did a great job.
Drive safely.
You too, Steve.